Carol.
Carol. I guess I can hear you guys. So there's that number.
They're always one of the people like you don't have.
So they're already. So.
She's moved into the.
You don't need your audio player. I'm gonna disable.
And anyone joining will be muted.
Oh, okay, so. Yeah, so that should be good. Do you want me to just hang around?
That'd be great. So this is.
I did. Well, I only have them easily accessible because I had recently.
I don't see it. I don't see the little light to.
We can share.
Do you see something?
No.
I can hear you. And that public.
More even I like stuff on paper. We're old school. We like red pens to mark.
Yeah, because I'm picking myself if I didn't make. An extra copy but not a colored copy. I do have an extra. It's just not color.
Carol, it's my chances in the meeting guide.
No, there's no meeting guide.
It's fine.
I would like to take role when you're ready.
Reorienting myself to the table.
Do we need Robert? Is Robert coming back?
He'll be around. Yeah.
Really looks like I have everything. It looks like I have a beverage problem. I started with coffee and tea this morning and now I have two types of water.
It's logical progression.
Thank you. This is the coolest container though because you can keep it separated. Yeah. And then you turn it over and when you turn it back, like your teeth not sitting together. I wish it was bigger and a higher volume.
I saw someone that had one of them.
Right? Yeah, it's super cool. So you can just carry the hot water until you're ready to make the tea and start it. If you like loosely.
Not to self. That's a great birthday gift for my sister-in-law.
I got it. I got it from Amazon. And the cool thing is actually this one, it'll tell you like the temperature of the water inside. So you know if it's too hot or whatever. And it actually keeps stuff for like six, seven hours. It's a really good one. I can find which one I got on Amazon. But the capacity is not great. It's like not a. But the lid is a weird size, so you can't like put it on a different container. I tried.
Does it fit in a cup holder in the car?
Yes, it's very, I mean, it's very thin. I'm not a gatekeeper on anything I have. It's cold. All right, are we ready to go? I will call this Tiger City Council. Is it a special meeting?
It's just a.
Regular meeting to order at 1:15 PM on Saturday. Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for being here today. One of our main goals is to really have a good discussion and form our city council ground rules that we can take forward to a future public meeting to vote on. But Carol would like to start with taking role.
I would. Counselor Goodissey. Counselor who? Mayor Lou.
Yes.
Counselor Robbins. Counselor Schleck. Counselor Shaw. Here, also President Wolf.
Thank you so much. Shelby, would, can you address like the two things that we talked about earlier that have to be in the ground rules according to the new charter?
Yep. So according to the new charter, the ground rules have to contain a code of conduct and they have to address board and committee assignments. And everything else is at the discretion of council. The. Council, the ground rules should also discuss the appropriate penalty for violation by charter. The violation of the ground rules is punishable by a resolution of censure or removal of council assignments. Those are the most serious things provided in the charter. Yeah, the only thing in our charter that is subject to removal by council is violation of the non-interference clause. So the ground rules are secondary to that. It's only a censure or removal from council assignments. So we'll come back to council by resolution.
Counselor Shaw.
Would you be able to elaborate on council assignments, what that means?
Liaison assignments.
Liaison assignment, thank you.
Do we want to get just started with the liaison assignments or do we want to get started with sort of the code of conduct and other things? What is the difference?
Code of conduct, because that may help us conduct the rest.
I think. Yeah, we can get started with the code of conduct. You know, the expectations that I think we came up with is probably a really good basis for a general code of conduct. But I also think in the previous ground rules, a lot of really important details get hammered out as far as expectations. And some of the points that we were talking about of how do we work together? I don't know if that should be in the ground rules or just a general discussion after, just as far as the city council and city staff. Because I feel like, is that in the team agreement? Partnership with teammates, yes. And the team agreement is different than the ground rules.
Is the code of conduct something separate from these two items?
That is new phrasing in the new charter.
Understood, so, okay. We would need to have a section within the ground rules addressing code of conduct. May or may not comprise existing elements. Thank you.
But I think we could do also something like the expectations may be great code of conduct. And then we could also adopt ground rules like the ground rules that we already have. If we wanted to do something along those lines. I don't think that the ground rules would necessarily be a code of conduct. I don't know. I think like code of conduct is more about behaviorism, less about the actual like who answers social media, which is in the ground rules, but I don't think of it as a code of conduct thing. So you're shaking your head. But I also see Counselor Schleck is trying to work through it.
Well.
Yeah.
So in our current ground rule, this section of S3 did briefly touch on how the consequences for not complying, not complying with the ground rules. So if we have to add that new section of our conduct, maybe we can attach, revise that section. This is a suggestion.
Or we name it administering the council ground rules is what it's called now.
Yeah.
Or just add to it.
Code of conduct.
Yeah, I kind of feel like, let's take social media, for example. I still think of that sort of as a behavior, just an agreed upon rule. And that feels like a code, like it could be a code of conduct. I guess I'm struggling to see any significance difference between a code of conduct and the ground rules unless we're trying to have the code of conduct be more values and things like that. And ground rules are the actual processes that we are choosing to. I feel like they're both the same thing in a way, but I can see it the other way.
Yeah, I see them as two different things, whereas a code of conduct is how you are going to conduct yourself on the values that we've agreed upon. And the ground rules are the nuts and bolts of if an email comes in, who is responsible for answering it? Because both are important, but they're different. I think. I think that these expectations could be considered a basis for our code of conduct. How we act and the ground rules is.
Ground rules are downstream.
How everything works.
Okay, that's one other clarifying question. So in our former ground rules, we had council liaison roles. And Shelby, I think I heard you say that that's only to the liaison roles of the council. But in the charter, it says in section 3.3, mayor appoints members of city boards and committees are provided as provided by council rules. So then won't we have to address that here also in council rules?
Yes. So I was saying, yeah, so the liaison assignments is that's one of the potential punishments for violation of the ground rules. But yes, the charter says that it has to include a code of conduct process for the selection of board and committee members. Those two things by charter, but then anything else is at council's discretion.
So not just board and committee members of us as a council, but also those who are serving as volunteers on the boards and committees? Okay, thank you. So just trying to get clear in my mind.
Are there, so let's start with code of conduct being values based, I think, given the discussion. And really, I guess, two questions. Would we want the values to be included in our code of conduct or would we want to go with the expectations as far as that would be our code of conduct? Or are there changes that we would want our code of conduct to be pieces of the expectations and not necessarily all of the expectations?
So what I was wondering, there's part of me that feels like the value should drive our code of conduct. The expectations, I really appreciate those, but that was also kind of formed on how we function kind of intra as a council. Should there be things, how would we present ourselves out in the community? Or some of those external components that should be in it, or how we conduct with staff, right? I mean, I just, are we missing something that should be added to a code of conduct that connects? Or maybe not, because we do have, I think, the team in there. So I don't know, just posing a question. If that makes sense.
I would say that the expectation states we act on our values. So if we are going to use expectations, we also have to delineate our values. So if we're going to use the bottoms that we have to somewhere along the line list out what those values are so that people know what we are talking about.
Or the whereas or something that would lead to it. I don't know how that gets formatted as a document, but there's a little preamble, these are the things we value therefore. These are our expectations of each other.
We do something like that?
So I guess my question would be doing something like that and saying, these are the values that we stand for as the 25 to 26 Tiger Council. And these are our code of conduct expectations. Are there any changes to this document that you would want to make other than fluffing things around? Counselor Shaw?
I feel like, I don't know quite how to explain it, but I feel like are there any sort of like just general employee standards, you know, like we expect this of our city team that we also need to abide by? Because I read this as a code of conduct of like, this is, you know, a high level rule of how we're going to treat ourselves. But also there are plenty of things that are not listed here, but I feel like we should expect of each other that are more at sort of an HR level, you know, that maybe.
Can you be specific?
Yeah, sexual harassment, let's go with that one. In the state legislature, there were a number of scandals and the Senate president was like, all I can do is remove the door from his office and remove him from council's, you know, committee assignments. And sorry, I'm a presiding officer. I don't have any authority to do anything over this beyond refer to investigation.
Better than I did, because that's what I was trying to get at. So maybe it's adherent to the policy as. Or. I was trying to come up.
Yeah, I don't know how to rephrase. I would accept. We would expect of ourselves, yes, sexual harassment is a very extreme example, but it's a great example of like. That's not listed here. You can maybe make an argument about it, but also I feel like it would be very helpful to have that.
Yeah, no, and that's a great point. And it goes to. Levels of actually a punishable, just legit, don't do that versus what are our more broader kind of aspirational policies of things that we would hope to achieve versus the don't ever do that policy. But I also think that could be addressed sort of under administering the council rules and the previous ground rules. Like if the mayor or councillor proceeds, proceeds one of the rules to be violated, the first should be to address the concern with the individual. Consult with the mayor or city manager as a last resort, request an item to be placed on an agenda. Like I think that takes care of, like, if you perceive, and we sort of had a discussion earlier, like if somebody violates their trustworthiness, our first expectation is council, council president Wolf, you know, can we talk about this? I feel like you really dropped the ball. Talking about the penalty of violation, which feels very formal to talk about it that way. That's where we can address, you know, what the steps are. But also, because I don't want to get so nitpicky that we say this one is here and this goes to here without giving the grace of understanding the situation. And that, you know, it could be different depending upon what happened. Because like dropping the ball on one thing is different than like dropping a huge ball somewhere else. Like they're both still dropping the ball, but they could have different consequences based on what it was done.
I just want to clarify that specifically around penalties and violations as opposed to the idea of including an expectation of following basic city team policies like sexual harassment, discrimination and so on. I just want to clarify those are sort of separate.
Right.
Things there. It's not, oh, well, we can address that through the implementation of these expectations. My point is like, well, we should state that that's an expectation.
Yes, but the violations of the expectations are in a different area, not in the ground, in the code of conduct.
Thank you, Mayor. The word I see missing from values is civility. And looking back over the years and seeing what's happening in many jurisdictions, civility doesn't exist. It's not a two-way street. And I don't want to say act of civility or just civility. But the values, I think, would be internal, your internal structure, who you are. And then the expectations are how do you behave in public and what drives you to when no one else is watching you? I mean, I know we all say things maybe behind the scenes about something that just happened, but you're sure not going to go sit up on the dais and say, I've had a bad day and then say something you shouldn't say. I mean, we all have those days, but, and as an elected official, everything you do and see and that is about you, people are going to judge you and many times act about you based on your civility and how you are in public if somebody comes in and pulls the sword out and cuts you to pieces. It's hard, but you still want to be civil in the process. I think that's diminished over the years.
I think that's a good thing, Dad. I think it was a piece of all of our conversation and you're talking, you're talking to a group that is very civil, but we did not like call it out because I think that was an inherent expectation, but. Because I also think that like, I expect this of us and I sort of expect this of our, our community, right? This is why I've asked for and been pushing for a code of conduct or expectations and an agreement between our community and the way that they treat our city staff. So our city staff can sit there and go, you don't get to talk to me that way. Like I want to help you through the problem, but you don't get to berate me the way that people now feel like they can do. Because the city team doesn't have the taste to do that the way I can tell people that they don't get to talk to me that way. Right? It's different.
So I added that. Is that comfortable for everything?
I think it's a great lead by example value, sort of in response to the world we're currently in right now.
So I did hear for expectations somewhere, like following the policies, an expectation that the councilors follow the policies of the city.
Yeah. However, that is a. Well.
Feel free to work on.
Yeah, I don't know how you, I don't want it to be like according to, you know, resolution 24-02. You know, like I don't know how to phrase it more simply. I also don't know how to make it specific enough where it's like, no, we're very clear about what we're talking about here.
Well, let's add employment policies because even though we're elected, we're also employed in a way, right? We're getting paid for this and the policies we're talking about as far as sexual harassment and stuff, it isn't an employment policy in a way. So is that appropriate or not appropriate?
Yeah, so we could say employment policies. We could also say generally applicable city policies. Because there are also policies like the travel policy, the financial.
Someone starts misusing money, that's not probably something we should have the right to censure and all that for.
Any additional words, anything or changes?
Is that a good Shelby?
So. So. So just from my own understanding, so we are putting the expectation part as the code of conduct? And then somewhere in the preamble, if we have one, we'll put the value in there.
Yes, I think the whole thing, I think, is our code of conduct.
Oh, okay.
And we can have a value statement that says the Tiger City Council holds these as our values and lists them off. And then we agree to behave, you know, or center these expectations, for instance. Or do you have any suggestion?
My concern is that if we put this, and there's consequences for violating them. So my, my concern is that how do we determine if somebody is not trustworthy?
I think that goes to administering the code of conduct, which will be a different discussion point under ground rules. That, I mean, I think the code of conduct is the value statement and the way we agree to sort of model our work. And then the ground rules continue to have, you know, we may rework some of this, but we have to have a penalty of violation, which I think administering the ground rules covers and we can decide what we want that to say. But I don't think that piece of it should be in our code of conduct.
Okay, well, let me think about it more.
Because I would also say that like, if we put this in there, then what if somebody breaks the ground rules? Right? Then that's not addressed because the violation piece is sitting in the code of conduct rather than addressing it all in the ground rules. Or we can make it in some separate documents. So there are ground rules, there are the code of conduct, and then there's the penalty of violation. Like maybe it's three separate documents. If that would make me feel like.
Yeah, I actually, why the charter, that would make me feel better in terms of complying with the new charter.
Or maybe there's four because there's a board and committee piece.
Anyway.
The ground rule, so you have your ground rules that has to include code of conduct.
Okay.
And board and committees. I like the way you're framing the administering the ground rules. That's a little nicer than.
I don't say violation feels like terrible, right? And it may not, not everything, very rarely will things have to go to that level where it comes before council is a censure. Right? Like, and the work that we did this morning on how to work together, hopefully nothing rises to the level and we all behave with integrity that like this doesn't become an issue.
Yeah, well, and especially if one of the, if the first point for administering the ground rules is to address with the individual. That can be whether it's sexual harassment or that somebody isn't trustworthy or.
But to be clear, if there's a sexual harassment issue, my expectation, and this is not meant to do anything, if like Raz and I have an issue, like it is inappropriate for the victim to have to address it with, like my expectation then is it skyrockets. Right? Like, so I think different violations are responded to in a different kind of way. That is, I mean, the way that I.
I just have written in comments. And if I'm jumping out, I just.
Yeah.
I mean, like the school board that is very clear about it, the school board, I mean, who goes to see? The pecking order of harassment case.
I don't think it is. The expectation would be that that would be addressed with HR and the city manager. But I don't know that that is.
Yeah, because at a board level, it just, it was different.
Yeah.
So that's why, which would correlate somewhat to what the mayor's saying. Anyway, we could put that on a parking lot list to follow up, but it's interesting to me that we don't have a policy or something that guides something so seriously. And so the only other question I have, I mean, it goes back to the question about civility under expectations. Do we feel it's clear to say we strive for grace and humility and we cover a lot of groups? But to your point, Mayor, how you talked about. But to your point, Mayor, and how you talked about how we engage with each other. So if community comes forward or staff, I just wonder if there could be, if it's how we engage in a civil way with respect. I just want to make sure that's really clear in how we communicate, especially with community members or, you know.
Do you have a suggestion for line?
I know.
We treat each other with civility and expect the same from our community and the city team.
Yeah. Say that one more time.
You know, when I get it up the first time, it's always great.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know that we have to replace that. I think we can just add a new line.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I know, replace it. So we act with, or, you know, we act with civility when engaging with each other or the committee, or the community or the city staff.
Yeah, or, yeah.
So the way I read those two next to each other is grace and humility is a goal, but civility is, is not a goal. It is, it is a non-negotiable.
How you communicate.
Yeah, yeah. Like... Yeah. One's aspirational and one is...
Well, I think, yeah.
That's just how I'm reading the phrase now that they're...
I think it's the acknowledgement that we may not always have humility. We might, you know, we're going to work on that, we're going to work for that, but that we are civil.
Yeah, they're uncivil.
Right, well, we could also change the other one to be, "We act with grace and humility." And it doesn't have to, I think we were choosing strive as like a different word, but if we want to say we act with humility, then that's saying it's there, we're not trying, it's there.
I have a concern about using that language because I feel like if someone does not act with grace, then that technically opens them up to a violation penalty. And I'm not sure. I read some of these as, you know, aspirational, we're trying to get self-improved. But then also, since we have a code of conduct, that suggests that if you do not follow this, there is a penalty to it.
Excellent conversation we have.
Yeah, so like, when I say generally applicable policies or like unsensible behavior, like, okay, yeah, that makes sense. We want to address that in a formal way. But if I, you know, am not graceful with receiving negative feedback, is that a censureable sort of thing at some point? I don't know.
May I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
How about, "We engage with civility with each other, the community and the city team, comma, striving for grace and humility."
I like that.
We can have two separate.
I like having it separate.
I know.
Okay.
I like it separate. I also have, Council Schlag, concern for the trustworthy part again. Sorry to revisit that. Because trustworthy could be so subjective. So I would like to have something like strive, like, similar.
I like the strive.
Quite this already strive, so.
We can use a word. I mean, we used "we" all the time.
I know. Well, I like that, there's sort of that way with the language, we're remarketing what is, again, like a central, like, "We're going to deal with this if you're not doing it," versus like, "We expect you in your best, you know, to the best of your ability and intent to try to be a certain way."
Yeah.
I don't like the idea of putting it out there that I'm going to try to be trustworthy.
Yeah.
I am trustworthy and as a leader, I want people to know that I expect myself to be trustworthy. I don't expect myself to try to be trustworthy. The whole integrity thing, right?
Yeah, but to the mayor's point that trust is earned, so I feel like we are bragging we're trustworthy.
But it's an expectation.
Yeah, right?
It's not a...
That you shall therefore be headed.
And I'm sorry, interrupted.
No problem. No, but I mean, if that's the case, if that's the case, then every single one of those should have some sort of strive in front of it. We practice accountability. Well, what if we don't one time? So we try to practice accountability, you know, if you start doing that, every single one of these, you could put into a less assertive or less sure.
How about we act with grace and humility instead of strive for? Because I think if we fall on any of that, we're still acting with grace and humility with each other, right? In the face of, you know, you know, not acting on our values 100% of the time. And here's the thing, each of us are going to fail on those expectations.
Yeah, exactly.
Each of us, at some point, are going to fail on something. And it's the way that we are going to hold each other accountable and show each other grace in that failure, which is either going to build the trust or it's going to erode it.
And hopefully not bringing somebody up on a code of conduct.
And hopefully it's not to the level, right, where it goes that way. So it...
Yeah, I think usually when I've seen a code of conduct, it's always in the, the most positive light, right? This is what we, this is what we're going to do. And we might not be perfect, so we, we might fail it, but this is our goal. And once you put it, "We're going to try" into a goal, you know, there is no try, only do, right?
Yeah, but I feel like it's important to make sure it's clearly a goal as opposed to, you know, like, "You, you shall do this." Like, there's no, no non-negotiable, like, look, let's take, "We are action-oriented to address community needs." And someone says, "You are not addressing our need. You said you would address our need and take action." Like, is that, that's a goal, I read that, and we're trying to do it. If we, for some reason, don't do it, is that code of conduct violation? I don't know.
But I also, this is a code of conduct for us as councilors to each other, not necessarily for a community member to say, "You were in violation, I think, of the code of conduct," right? Like, I think that it's handled through a different process. And this is an expectation of how the council works together and how we will hold each other accountable. This is, yes.
How about if you said intra-council expectations?
Cool.
I like that.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Brilliant.
Yeah. Because, I mean, if we fail the public, that is handled through a different forum than if we fail each other.
Well, yeah, exactly. I guess I'm trying to, like, separate, like, us working together in a professional environment from political expectations or, or results, you know? Like, I feel like they're slightly different things. I think that solves that. Yeah.
Shelby, do you feel comfortable adding some blocks and words where we... And staff soften the, to get the code of conduct where you need? Okay. So then let's talk about a different page, which would then be administering the coun, what do we want to call it? Administering the council. You said the ground rules are for everything. So, so here is my recommendation. We have the code of conduct, we have administering the ground rules, we have board and committee rules, and then we have administration. And this, what used to be the ground rules, becomes like the administration piece of it, which is the nuts and bolts of, like, other things we agree to of how we do business. Because the code of, or the, I'm sorry, the ground rules is all of these and not just this paper now. So changing the phrasing on what this is, okay. So then it's going to be administering the council ground rules because that is going to be administering everything, which are these three different buckets that we're now talking about. For those of us who have been on council for a while, it's like reframing your reign because the ground rules are now all of these things. Does that make sense? Any questions on that?
So code, then...
Boarding committees.
Then board committees.
And, and then until we come up with a better word, administration.
Okay. Which includes things like penalties, I'm sorry.
No, penalties is administering the ground rules. So the administration is like, who answers communication? Who, yeah.
Okay. What you say on social media and what you don't say, and then representing the city 24/7.
Okay.
So administering the council rules currently says, "All members of the city council will review the ground rules and sign an agreement to comply with the rules." I think that's there. And we can just get a doc, the ground rules again will encompass all of those things. And then the next piece of it is, how do we want to manage violations? Previously, if the mayor or council perceives one of the ground rules to be violated, they should first address the concern with the individual with tracts based on first person. That's what it was called, Shelby?
The first-person rule.
First-person rule, which we may want to write in here considering we've already discussed that. And then to consult with the mayor or city manager. And then as a last resort, request an item be placed on a city council agenda to determine next steps of resolution. That being said, I do think we need to talk about violations that are so egregious that they should not be addressed one-on-one and, you know, should maybe go straight to HR or straight to the mayor or straight to whatever it is. But I also don't want us to get so nitpicky that there isn't flexibility to make judgments between them.
Maybe we could say something like, unless inappropriate due to remedy of the violation, councilors should follow the first-person rule to address perceived violations on a one-on-one basis.
Or something about the city of Tigard's generally applicable policies, which sounds incredibly vague, but then it goes straight up.
Well, but, yeah. I mean, but I also think if, like, somebody can't find a receipt is different than somebody stealing money from the city, right? Like, there are variations with the policies too.
There's an intent behind it. Accidental, like, you can't find the receipt and just lost it versus knowingly, deliberately stealing money.
But it, but it also depends too, like, a lot of what we talked about with the first-person rule was these, these expectations that we have of being accountable, showing up, doing what you want to do or what you say you're going to do. And so it's one thing for me to say, you know, "Faraz, you said you were going to go to that ribbon cutting, so I didn't go," but then blah, 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 you know, whatever. So we're talking about that versus something that really needs a sanction, right? That then, you know, I have to go and get extra help for. So I feel like that first person was a lot for kind of more personal conflicts than some of the other things that are coming up.
So I think, you know, perhaps continuing the, the kind of rules that are already on here, right? So first-person rule, if that doesn't work, go to the mayor and/or city manager as a last resort on city council. And then say something along the lines, you know, if a violation, and I don't know how to say, hits a certain threshold or importance or comfortability level, a councilor may go straight to the city manager and mayor or straight to HR or those sorts of things. And I guess maybe having mayor and city manager first and then no surprises sort of a thing. If things happen or are happening between council and it goes, someone goes immediately to HR and stuff and it blows up and then all of a sudden I hear about something, like, I'm also going to feel pretty terrible that I wasn't in the loop and the city manager perhaps wasn't in the loop on something that happened. Like, just as a, so what does that look like or what is a fair sort of a thing? And I'm looking to council.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to clarify on what you said, mayor and city manager, just recognizing that the mayor is part of the council and subject to these rules. We, you know, just as a rule of whoever the mayor is, assuming that this provides a baseline for future councils, we need a way of navigating that as well. Because if it's like between me and Council Robin, it's going to the mayor, makes sense. If it's between you and me,
Yes.
what are we, where do I go?
The next step is city manager.
So...
That's why "and/or," I think is appropriate. It says "or," we can do "and/or" to continue that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate having flexibility there.
Yeah.
Future proofing is what I was thinking.
Yeah. But I think there are appropriate times where, you know, maybe it immediately gets elevated, but I don't know how to express that in writing. Yes, councilor.
I think maybe we can just... I don't think there will be too many circumstances under which that would, we would need to elevate that, right, hopefully? So maybe we can just name them, like sexual harassment, racial discrimination, or...
I don't want to put a box around it because there's something, like, I just...
It's like listing all the things you want.
But, but if the mayor and city manager are the first step and we're like, "We hear you, but we really think you need to work that back out," like, I think that is the sort of safety buffer on the first layer of what does this rise to? So maybe just the comments of, "There are times it's appropriate to go straight to the city manager and/or mayor for a violation." Does that feel reasonable?
Okay.
Yes.
This is really more a question for Shelby, but at what point or example does the Ethics Commission come in?
Yeah, that's true.
And is that, is that step four, whatever's next? I don't know that you want to include that in there because it exists, but there are things that councilors could do that might rise to that level beyond just talking to the mayor and city manager. It may be a major ethical issue. And it's pretty, I think, in some circumstances.
I mean, so I will tell you, there is a circumstance in which I filed an ethics report against a former mayor. And so that wasn't in the ground rules or any of those sorts of things, but perceiving. And maybe there's a piece of it there to be stated if an organ, government ethics law violation is suspected. But also what does that look like? Because I, it shouldn't be off the table, but I also don't want people to, like, trigger that too automatically all the time.
Yeah. So one way that I might look at it is, what does the person want from, out of the situation, I guess? So if another counselor violates the travel policy because they don't turn in a receipt, is the outcome, you just want them to turn in their receipt?
Yes.
Because that can easily be addressed with the city manager or the mayor saying, "Turn in your receipts so that finance can process it," and that doesn't need to be a council discussion. If it's, like, we've talked, sexual harassment, is it that you want the person censured? Or do you want an internal investigation that nobody knows about in the public yet? And you need more information to happen, in which case, maybe you don't want to bring it to the city manager now. Maybe you want to go straight to HR and have the investigation done, working with me and HR. So I might look at it as, what is the purpose of making the violation or making the allegation person off council because it's so egregious? That's your vote. A majority vote of council has to determine the censure. Anything else is really, how would we deal with any other employee in this situation? And so the city manager, me, the mayor, can figure that out internally as, "What if all of you were just a regular city employee, what would we do?" Versus, "Let's automatically look, is this a censureable offense so that we can put it on the agenda?" So I might look at it from that perspective.
It's hard to put in writing too.
It is. But the other thing is, these are your rules. So this doesn't need to spell out every single possible outcome. We do have employment policies that say this, these are the potential violations or sanctions for these certain offenses, the serious ones being discrimination or something like that.
I also feel like, and I don't want to, like, when I've come across something and I need help figuring out what next steps are, most of us haven't been through situations before where it's like, take the last situation that I was talking about, it was like, "Oh, my gosh, what did I find out? Like, what do we do here?" And I feel like that person is probably going to look for partnership and asking what those next steps are. And like, you know, again, if it's against me, then the city manager is the appropriate person to help figure out those next steps. And I still sort of feel like there is something to help with next steps and somehow that needs to be vocalized to get what you're asking, what you're after.
Or escalated according to existing city policy or something? Like, we have a bunch of things for discrimination, sexual harassment, financial stuff. No need to spell out who to go to, just say, "Well, follow what that policy is," you know?
Let me give, so I think practically, who do you go to to figure out what that is?
Well, yeah.
Right? Because like, none of, I don't, I don't have policies. It would, I would be going to Rob or I would be going to Shelby saying, "Hey, this really weird thing happened." Again, help partner with me to help figure out what the next steps are.
Sure.
Or you could always go to HR and ask.
Yeah.
And, and the point, I guess I was saying, incoming to the city manager. I guess I was saying incoming to the city manager mentioned about ethics, it just made me wonder if we should put, we should be ethical in the expectation. I, I don't know. It seems like we follow City Tigre's general applicable policy. We might want to think about adding ethics, Oregon ethic rules. I, I.
Well, I mean, we're talking about like administrative rules, Oregon ethics laws. Part of me thinks we have an oath of office.
We're already required.
Yeah, like.
We are required.
So if I'm doing, yeah, I'm violating Oregon law, well, that's a violation of the office. I feel like that should be a censurable offense right there, right?
Yes.
Or, you know, I violate the Fourth Amendment or something. I don't know.
Okay.
Do you feel like you have enough to go on to have an administering the council ground rules document?
Yep.
Yes. So councillor Apple.
So I don't expect this to be part of the expectations. I would be curious, Shelby, because I can't seem to get out of my head space that like school boards have a whole section, that these are some serious items, should they come up? That there's not policies on that. So this is just a side request. I would, I'm surprised that LOC or someone just to govern and assist with elected officials and municipalities, that there's not something more structured. Because we're trying to create a succinct sentence that covers some very specific, serious matters. And it just bothers me. So I just wanted that on the record.
It doesn't feel like we're trying to invent the wheel that probably should have been.
It just, it seems like something that should have protections in place and orders. I mean, the laws are there and I understand that, but just from a procedure. So I think this is all really important conversation. I just feel like there, I don't know, maybe I'm way off base. I just feel like there should be better structure for councils to adopt and follow.
Sometimes I've been let down on my expectations of what I think LOC should act. So it's a good question and we'll find out, but.
And the answer might be no, we don't have that.
Then we can suggest it.
I've called and I'm like, really? Okay.
Okay. So I will get back in the game and focus.
If you have a copy.
No, I will. I mean, there's a whole section on board administration policies. And so anyway, I just, this is a very serious conversation.
Yeah. Councillor Scott?
Just to serve at, at an end statement, based on the charter, there are only three disciplinary ways the council can discipline a councillor to. Censure and removal of liaison assignments. And the third one I was thinking of is if they violate the interference clause, that's grounds for, for, for removal. Those are the only tools.
Yep.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear about that. What's the interference?
So the non-interference rule says that council may not direct outside of a, an individual councillor cannot direct the city manager, city attorney or municipal court judge outside of a policy decision and outside of the, outside of acting as the council body. So you can't come to me with a, and direct me to, I don't know, you can't go to Steve and direct him to fire somebody because that's not a council-level decision and that's not a policy decision within council's authority. So you can go to Steve and say, hey, I've got serious concerns with this employee, but you can't say I'm directing you to fire this person. And again, a majority of council would have to agree to.
Yeah, actually a unanimous.
Oh, unanimous.
Unanimous.
Yep. It's meant to be.
Pretty serious.
It's like it's something kind of political.
Yeah.
Unanimous excluding the, the.
Exactly.
He's got the neck.
Uh, do we, let's just dig on council liaison roles. So there's a few pieces of it. There's the councillors as liaison to boards and committees. And then there's assigning boards and committee, community members. So we can start with, I don't know if y'all have this up, council liaison roles. A council liaison maintains a critical connection between the council and a designated committee advisory board or task force. The primary purpose is to facilitate communication between the council and appointed member groups. From time to time, the council may appoint ad hoc committees or task force to help address various topics or issues facing the council and appointed councillors to serve as a liaison. The liaison plays a key role by working with city teammates to share committee recommendations with the rest of council during their regular council reports. It's important for the liaison to share council feedback with the committee that, the committee they are assigned. The council should carefully balance their participation with empowering the volunteer members to share their diverse perspectives. So I think a couple of conversations really important, what is a liaison? What is the role of a liaison? And then like, how are they assigned or do we agree to the recommended assignment is a great place to start. But yeah, councillor Shaw?
Um, I feel like just one, one little thing on to be from time to time, the council may appoint ad hoc committees. Is there any, so let's suppose we are rethinking our committee structure and we decide we do not, no longer see any for Parks and Rec Advisory Board, just hypothetical. The council would have the authority to just dissolve that. Okay. I would like to say the council may appoint or dissolve. I feel, I would just like to explicitly state that the council, like once it's appointed, that doesn't mean it just exists forever at that point.
So I think, but I, I think B addresses that we have standing boards and committees, which we absolutely have the right to get rid of with, at any point in time, which is inherent. But B talks about one-offs. Ad hoc or task force.
Which one?
Which B.
Which one states the standing committees?
With, the standing committee isn't like, the board, the standing board and committees are inherent power that we have just generally. I, like, it's not granted to us anywhere because I guess it's just there.
So planning commission and budget committee are statutory authority or statutorys. Everything else is, I think library board is in code. Parks and Rec might be in code. So those would be ordinances.
Okay.
So you could get rid of everything except budget and planning.
Okay.
Yeah. So I mean, that power is in the code. I don't, I don't know that we have to have that here because B specifically talks about one-offs.
Well, there's a mechanism.
He died.
You're aware of the power. I'm just.
Does anyone have questions about liaison assignments? I think this is also a great time to talk about, just because we're here doing this, about what the like report out looks like.
Yeah.
Because there are different general expectations. And I think there's a couple of different ways that we can talk about it. So in the third meeting of the month, the workshop meeting, council liaison reports is on there. And what are our expectations? And I don't necessarily know that that has to be in writing. It's just a general understanding of like, what information are we reporting out? Do we want a summary of all of the agendas and the topics that everybody talked about? I mean, my vote is no, but maybe that's important to other people. Or is it stuff that like just may have piqued your interest, right? Like Parks and Recreation Board can talk about a lot of stuff, but maybe they had a really interesting conversation on a new park recommendation and that is elevated, but the rest of the discussion is not. Like what, what do we want to tell each other about what we're hearing in our board and committee meetings? What's of value to us?
Once we determine that'd be really great to me to have a template so we know we, it's easy, it's turnkey, we can just put it in there. But like one upcoming events, I know just from Parks and Rec, it'd be great for you all to know that Martin Luther King, they're going to be doing XYZ. So I definitely would say key events upcoming. Requests of the council, because some have said, well, we want council to take support on this or we want the council to write a letter to the state of Oregon to provide money for a doc for disability purposes. So there could be like, the, perhaps it's going to come to the council with this request, unless there are any legal reasons not to do that. So maybe any committee requests to the council could be good.
And that caveat, planning commission would be the only one that might be different.
Very true. So maybe there's, in the template, there's a caveat there for planning commission. Yeah.
The only other thing I would say if it's time sensitive, typically they email indirectly. And like, so by the time likely liaison reports come, like the letter may not already be gone.
True. Yeah. Yeah.
It's still maybe good for the rest of the people though. But you get copied on the letter when it goes out.
They also request like, can we meet with the, I mean, they're, they, I know in T-TAC, some of the new members didn't know that there's regular meeting between, and some, I don't even know where it's written, but that the council meets with the transportation committee. And I don't know if that's in statute somewhere, if it's required, but I know that a couple of council members or committee members, excuse me, said it'd be really great to meet with the council. And the chair's like, we do that. And I'm like, oh, well, when, how, what's that look like? And we should actually have a template for that too.
I think that's something where, and one of the things that I learned when I first started and first had my liaison assignment, it's like the library board gave me a frigging binder, right? Like they were very thorough and very great about this is what you're getting into. And other boards were like, hi, welcome, here's your seat. And I think perhaps what the onboarding process looks like for boarding committee members, which would include that kind of information, like as far as their bylaws and what their roles are. And then, you know, what are their roles in relationship to council, which would include once a year, you come before council. I think those sorts of things are more geared towards recommendations to staff to have an adequate, and whatever is given to the community member should absolutely be given to you as a liaison, so you also understand.
Yeah. I was thinking more of, let's say, a transportation committee decides they don't want to meet with council. I would want to give the council that heads up, I would think. If they decide they don't want an annual meeting with the council, that would be something.
Everybody asks for more time, not less.
Yeah. So anyway, I guess back to kind of create a template, like maybe just a summary. Because it can get like they, and I think they'll do that, two or three bullet points. And then any key points you'd want your fellow councillors to know and then events.
Yeah. I, I think just a summary and events and then asks is great.
Yeah. I think that's sufficient. I would have a concern about the liaison role inadvertently being required as a conduit between the committee and the council, because I think that's a lot of discretion. And like depending on how you phrase that, I feel like it should be more informational, to your point. Because at some point, if there's a recommendation from the committee, I would imagine a staff liaison is going to communicate that to council at some point, regardless of what the, the particular liaison may be. It could be like they have an idea for a park or anything, and I think it's a terrible idea. Well, it should still come to council. It shouldn't be like incumbent on me and according to these rules to transmit that recommendation to the council. And then I just say, no, we're not.
Which I think actually brings up a really important point of the role of the liaison is literally to be there as a connector to council. You were not another member of that board or committee. And if you do express an opinion, you very clearly have to say, in my opinion, not Tigre City Council, unless we've done some sort of motion, like being very clear about that. Because the boarding committees are really about empowering them. And there's that power differential that we talked about, that you may think you're buddies with them, but what you say carries more weight than the person sitting next to them. So really understanding you're there as a reference and not a participant, I think is really important.
And that would be even clearer to make for staff, because I know in a couple of committees, and they'll say, councillor Shaw, what do you think?
So maybe we put that in the ground rules, right? Like some sort of verbiage around you are, you know, a liaison and not a participant. Where there is a reference check and any opinions you share are your own and not that of council, unless council has previously taken action.
Reference and information that are referenced a lot.
You could add that to, to A, because it says the primary purpose is to facilitate communication between the council and appointed member groups. Just say the liaison is not a member of the.
Excellent. Yeah. I think that's really important. And yeah, I mean, it's, you get really friendly with them, but I mean, when you speak, it changes minds.
Yeah.
Councillor who?
Yeah, I, I have the opposite problem at TCAC where I'm there, they don't, they act like they don't see me, which is fine. But going back to Mary Loop's question about how BSM reports should be conducted, I, I concur that we, I think I'm perfectly fine with just council members sharing what's interest to them. And they, whether they think that the council as a body should know and not any single thing. I appreciate that. And, and I seem to remember we, the council received planning commission minutes, approved minutes.
Yeah.
When Doreen was here, but since she left, I don't remember seeing them anymore. So I would still like to see at least, I mean, ideally I would like to see every approved minutes of every board committee. That's fine. But if you don't want that, I don't know.
I think you can find them online.
I know, but it's just good to. Yeah, it's just good to have those, at least planning commission approval minute automatically for council when they're approved by the planning commission. I don't know. I, I would like that because it's interesting to see, for me, you know, all the development going on in the city of Taker, so.
tease out something from there, because we did have in the last six months, I think it was my second meeting, it was downtown reimagined, where we were asked to make code changes that were referred to us or recommended to whatever the correct verb is sent to us from the planning commission. And that didn't include meeting minutes, but included a report, a couple of reports, as well as the sort of staff report explaining the justifications behind the code stuff. Is that sufficient or you also want, just to be really clear, you want the meeting minutes of the planning commission that went into their approval that was there sent to us?
Because not, not every planning commission approval require council approval, right? Many approvals can be done that planning commission.
Quasi-judicials.
Yeah. So I would like to see what they, what they quasi-judicial decisions are, but.
I was gonna say, does anybody else want the planning commission meeting minutes? Because like, I mean, there's, if other people want it, then I think it's, we can send it out. And those of us who don't want to read it can just file it online.
Or just know where to find it.
But I think if it's, you know, something that councillor who really wants, I don't, I mean, I also don't want us to get just another email that we have to figure out what to do with. So I don't care either way. I'm just trying to gauge, do you want planning commission meeting minutes to be delivered to you?
They were helpful because it was great to see what, particularly in one of his communities, and I talked about a cottage cluster going into a community or something was helpful to see what the community members who showed up said. So yes, I guess it is.
I mean, there's part of me that wonders on weekly city manager reports, the week, the, the minutes come out, that's forwarded to the city manager. It's an attachment FYI, planning commi, I mean, does that help to eliminate one email just to say, you know, in that week? I don't know.
But I also know that that was, so I will tell you, that email started with Steve that was not previous city manager. So I don't know that Rob intends to continue that. So I mean, but so what I'm saying is different city managers have different things. And so I don't want to automatically assume that and tag that off to something that Rob may not be doing. So if we want planning commission meeting minutes, we just need to ask for them and have them separate from, and like different city manager styles.
I, I, if we're going to go with it, I'd only want it if it's a relevant agenda. I'm not just a sort of like, oh, they met last Tuesday here, the meeting minutes.
So, so it's either all or nothing.
Let's go for all.
I'll go for all and you can.
We can always stop it.
I am just publicly stating that I will file them. I am not going to read them unless they come before. And so that is totally fine if others want to file them too. Rob, can you facilitate ensuring that city council or Shelby, I guess because you're not officially sharing it, that city council gets copied on approved minutes?
Yes. And I will add another asterisk, that if it is going to come before council, my preference would not be to share it, because the package that comes to council is part of the, the, the loop of record essentially, if there was an appeal of it. And so.
Yes, I don't, then let's just do nothing. And if you then, the councillors can then go, like, because human error, like I just.
Yeah. So there's a lot of decisions that end with planning commission and that if they are appealed, they go straight to the hearings officer and then straight to the board. So there's no role for council. So we can absolutely send you those. If it's going to be appealed to city council, if council is the appellate authority, we won't send them.
Are these minutes posted on the web?
Yes, they are.
So how do we just send an email saying new? Or just tell us what day are they posted and you can set up, if you want to look at it, you can set up.
Or just tell us, what day are they posted? And you can set up, if you want to look at it, you can set up your own reminder.
Like I, I was thinking of the human aspects of like, and the administrative burden of somebody being like, what is this gonna come before council? Yes or no? Do I sound, is this or not? Like it just seems like a lot.
But those are public information, so I don't, I don't, why is there concern for sharing public information as council?
The concern is then what a councillor would do with it. So if you ask questions about it, that's ex parte communications. Now, or if you, you know, review additional information, that's ex parte. You go to the site, that's ex parte. So it's basically what you do with that information. So if you are the appellate authority, you have to be super careful. That your world is the record that is handed to you on the night of the appeal. So that's the only concern.
But Shelby, you don't know that, right? Cause if you're doing real time review of minutes and then it gets appealed.
Well, so council is the appellate authority for very few cases. So we could, we could definitely do, we could send them to council. Because most of our cases, you don't.
As long as we know where it is, but that is a growing frustration for me is because I can never go onto the Tiger internal website and find minutes or notes. It's like this.
Yeah.
Yellow brick road or put little breadcrumbs out.
I don't think ever posted any of them.
Website would have it, so we could teach you how to get onto that.
Okay, that answers it.
Yeah, there are, I mean, you can, the. Code sorting area or the national template, I've studied, maybe on that work.
I'm meeting with Steve Monday as the first meeting with him, just having coffee together to find out what he's doing, what he attends, et cetera. So I don't miss a beat with anything. And. I do plan on soliciting your opinions on things, or whether you want me to continue with something if it's one of these. I mean, have, I have enough experience to know that, that some things are more important than others. And Shelby's exactly right about ex parte contact. You haven't been on a planning commission, the first thing, at least in Beaverton, my five years when I started. It was important that people know if you went by the site, or whether. You went by and stopped, suddenly three neighbors show up that recognize you, and that's, that's an ex parte contact. And maybe they don't ask anything of you or ask you to commit for a vote, but you do get into ethics issues. If they want to turn on you and say, well, I know, I talked to Shelby about X. When she was out at the site. And then it becomes a real question of your integrity and veracity of anything you say. And, and so you want to keep as clean a nose as you can on any of this. I mean, no, it sounds like goody goody, but at the end of the day, it's better than having to apologize for being overly zealous. And it, it just, it's a safer way to go for you and for us. But. To that question is, I am meeting with Steve and I'll take as much of his time as he'll give me. So just, just so I don't miss anything along the way.
Are we settled on planning commission meeting?
I think so.
I, so I don't know where we, I assume no, I mean, especially after this, like it just.
Sounds like no, and there's options to go on the public website.
My question is, you know, councillor Schlag is the council liaison, the planning commission. So he's pretty, he will get the approved minute. So I don't understand why there would be a problem if I got the approved minute, too. An ex parte communication, my understanding, communicating with staff is not considered ex parte communication. I don't want to be that devil's, but I, I can go look it up. So, all right, it's fine. We don't need to get it. Let's move on. Thank you.
So Mayor, I have just one additional question. As an example, last, just Thursday night, right, I attended the. Community Development Block Grant, we had a presentation for the center. So is that acceptable to do that real time? I mean, it was FYI, I didn't.
For the what?
So we had a presentation at Washington County for an update on the Centers for Addiction Cretion Treatment. I thought it was really good slide deck, so I did an FYI push out, because it, to me, to wait until a liaison report didn't seem timely. So I guess.
I haven't read the email, which is why some of you are nodding your head. And I, I was like, what are you talking about? No, I thought that's totally fine. Like if you're like, hey, this is a really great thing, FYI, send it out. So you don't, because you don't want to show the slide presentation during the thing?
Oh, don't you?
No, I don't, councillor. No, I don't.
But I would invite for any of you that have, especially like an outside speaker coming in like, hey, this was inside FYI, I learned something that FYI.
Yeah, and I think that's an important thing that, like, if we are able to wrap this up, is just talk about. When we can email everybody and when we can't, right? Like, and so. We will continue to power through this conversation, so we can have the one that probably is the most applicable to us in the end. So for, we, we talked about adding the, the expectation that the, you are, you are not a participant, you are a reference. Do we want to address specifically if there are any rules or regulations, I guess, or expectations on boarding committee assignments? Right? As far as, so we can talk about, so what is working or what is not working with the board and committees for community members? And if we want to formalize that, I, the expectation I assume is that we formalize the, how it's done.
I, I'd like to formalize it and the rules, because I've had questions previously about it. And, you know, at the end of the. My experience of the process was that, you know, the mayor's coming up, meeting with everybody, interviewing everyone, making a series of recommendations. And then it comes to us. I find, I sort of view our appointment process as a bit of a hiring and firing sort of situation. It's hard for me to make these personnel decisions if I haven't met 40 people that I'm about to appoint. So it made me feel a bit like a rubber stamp. I'm like, what, what, I, okay, I got a packet, 100 page Google form, printout, PDF of all their applications. I've never met these people before, except for the people on liaison, on the liaison floor. And the only reason at the end of the day I felt comfortable with it is I looked at the numbers and I think for the first batch, it was. Forty people applied, you interviewed 37, 36 were getting spots. And I looked at that, I thought, okay, you're not exercising. You know, crazy amounts of discretion in the sense that you're just rejecting massive amounts of people. You know what I mean? So I, I would like to find a way for counselors to be more involved in the process. I understand that's more administrative overhead. It would make me feel better as, you know, sort of final check in the system of, do we want this person influencing. Community discussions on city policies. That's just my two cents.
No, I totally understand. I am open, so a couple of things to give the background. A, a previous mayor had advocated their responsibility and said whoever the liaison is, you can pick whoever is on the committee. That also created additional problems, because if somebody wanted, like, was interested in multiple committees, they would have to do multiple interviews. And nobody was talking to each other and those sorts of things. So the way that it's currently working, for those who may not know. We, I set aside chunks of time, which, given the conversation this morning, I will also tell you, this is truly my favorite thing that I get to do as mayor. Like, this is the one thing, and I consider it kind of by responsibility, too, of like having that, that touch point with community and hearing from them. And we have really great conversations. I also ask them, and they say, I want to be a part of these two committees. But as I'm having the discussion, it's like, you actually would really love over here. And it has that ability. And we put out on a table and played Jenga. And I, I know there have been a couple of pickups with community members who have been frustrated in the past. I will not say anything bad about a community member as far as why they haven't been appointed at the dais. Please come to me with questions. I will have 100% honest conversations with you, if somebody wasn't appointed, why that was, or those sorts of things. The conversations that we have, because I never want to insult a community member that we have in closed doors, one on one, I'm not gonna have it at the dais. I'm not, so like, the efficiencies and the community member experience has gone much better. In this process than the disjointed process previously. And so we also can't have all of the community, like council and all of the things. And we can't have liaisons who are interested in committees, because sometimes people have five committees, and there may be five different liaisons. So I understand where you're coming from, but also from like a logistical standpoint, like I don't know what that would look like. So.
Yeah, I don't have a solution necessarily, but that, it's a pain point for me still. I understand where you're coming from, but it. It still doesn't feel good for me to be asked to approve seven consecutive resolutions with 40 something appointments. And the first time I met them was when we took the photo right afterwards. Like that's just how it feels.
And Mayor, I really appreciate you putting more efficiency into the process, because I agree with you, there were some.
There was a lot of.
There was a lot, a lot. I'm wondering if, and I think right now, there's the applications that come in. And if I'm not mistaken, Nicole takes a first pass.
No, I interview everybody.
So I'm wondering, okay, and I know you like that role, but given the conversation this morning about your limited time, I wonder if. If you, maybe just staff or you and staff could take a first pass and narrow it down to maybe three, if it's on a particular committee. Cause the word, for me, going in as a liaison and not having met that person before. Until the night of the photo and then the first meeting, it's like, there's that lost opportunity of engagement. Where it's like, oh, hi, I haven't met you before, but welcome to the committee that I'm a liaison on. So I'm wondering if there isn't a way, if you narrowed it down, and maybe this doesn't work from an application perspective, but if you and staff narrowed it down to two or three. And then ask liaison, here's the date and time, if you want to come and meet with them, great, but if you can't make it, that's on you. But at least you get the opportunity to meet that candidate before they're chosen. That would be helpful just from a liaison perspective.
No, I totally understand and appreciate that. It's an impossible ask, because I don't actually know which one, like, they're going to fit on and what, like. So that, like, puzzle piece of it happens during the interview process and a lot of information comes out. And there's been multiple times that people have ended up on committees they didn't ask for because of the conversation that we had in the room. And it just, I, I get what you're, you're asking for and I can appreciate it. It tends, I feel like we have better boards and committee in a result because of the process of meeting and talking to everybody. And then sitting down and saying, what is the right fit for this board and for this person? So I actually think it would be great if you as liaisons wanted to have a meeting with them between their appointment and their first meeting.
Cause they don't know that, but that would be great.
Yeah, okay.
That's a possible solution.
Yeah, that would be a great next, next step. I, it just, the information that we get out of the interview impacts where they go. And because there have been people who are like, I love planning commission in this, but they've ended up on Parks and Rec. Because during the conversation process, turns out they love the trails and they wanted, but they never thought about being on the committee. There have, even this last time, there's probably three people who ended up on different committees. Yeah.
So for the amount of things that I love to engage in, this is actually one that I'm good, go for it, you got it, thumbs up, I'm done. And I, I just need to share that, right? That I, I'm good with it. What I want to remind you all is, starting next week, in two weeks. We're all gonna walk in, possibly the new committees that we've not met anybody. So the notion of needing to know the people that come onto our committees in a flip, we're gonna all walk in.
Yeah, for this one, but the next time when there's another one, it'd just be nice.
I mean, take that opportunity.
Yeah, well, except if you're, if you're gonna have, if you're approving them that day and the next night is the meeting, there's no way I could have met with that person. Between that night and the next day. But it'd be nice, just to me, from a handholding and community perspective, because you watch these people come in and they're, I don't know anyone here. It'd just be nice for them to at least know one person when they go into that, that task force or committee. So that's all.
Of them, and then have coffee with them, hey, the next time we can get together, let's have coffee.
Yeah, and that's what I do, but it'd be nice to, I think there's a role in between. When we're at the dais and just accepting a blanket 40 names to. And again, it could be an opportunity to meet with them, and if that's logistically, it sounds like impossible, then at least here's the name of the person, reach out to them. But if it's the night before and the meeting's the next night, there's no way. I mean, I could go on and say, hey, by the way, welcome. It's just, that's to me what's missing from what the process was before, when I actually sat in the interviews with staff, with the mayor. We interviewed two or three people, we chose that final candidate and then it went to council. And then it was, oh, I already know you as a community member. Was that more the handholding touch than we have now? And it could just be.
I, I think the other question is, and I will be clear, and I didn't say this in my email, and I apologize. And we have to decide for us, the boards and committee assignments, is this for one year, is this for two year? Because my recommendations for the council president's role was lower, because there are things like the transportation committee that like, the council president is automatically the backup on. So does it make sense that there could be a turnover of liaison assignments every year anyway, which would, and then coincide with. Hopefully, when we, if we don't have attrition, like this only happens once a year. So. But I, I think there's absolutely opportunity and, you know, we can try to see if we can give names out even earlier. So before they're approved, if you wanted to reach out, there's certainly an opportunity to do that, too. Actually, I think.
Yeah, I'm like councillor person, well, I'm fine, more power to mayor, she's doing a good job. But it sounds to me like councillor Schlag and councillor Shaw will express interest in more involvement with the interview process. So I'm wondering, maybe we'll still have Mayor Lupe continue doing the interview, but. The councillor was agreed to, I don't know if the mayor would do, would agree to open up. When she's interviewing, invite both of you there, and if you cannot make it, that's fine, but if you can make it. Go to the interview process, since both of you, since like you are more interested in the interview process than the rest of us. So I don't know if that's.
It doesn't have to be the interview, it's just, even if it's chosen, if the mayor's chosen that person. Just being able to get notice of, hey, this person's now gonna be on crab, it'd be a great opportunity if you reached out to them. Cause you're gonna be meeting them soon, but give them the opportunity to just go and introduce yourself.
Maybe we'll try to give, we'll give more runway. Yeah, that's what we'll do. We'll just, we'll give more runway. And then that also allows all of you, if you have questions, and I would ask, that if you have questions. Like, ask me individually on the side, because there may be a specific reason why this person wasn't on this committee or those sorts of things. And again, I don't want to say anything bad about a community member at the dais, so know that I will always like default to not giving you the information public. Just because I don't want to hurt someone's feelings, right? Or have something. So. Would that work, giving at least two weeks between, like, pushing out the information to the city council, two weeks, at least two weeks ahead of time. Before it goes on the agenda?
I'd prefer councillor who's recommendation of being part of the interview process. For me, this is not a shake their hands. I, I will, I feel like if I'm being asked to take a vote to make an appointment, I should be able to justify that beyond. The mayor made a recommendation, okay, I was given the day or the day before their paper application, I wasn't privy to the great information that you're receiving during the interview. Okay, take a vote and, and you're, you're committing them for three, four years in some cases. That's my concern. Just, and that's just speaking for myself, as someone who's being asked to take a decision, but, put my name to saying this is the right person for this role. So, again, that's just me.
I'm happy to be involved anyway.
Yeah, I just, I, I think in a way, it would also be strange of, you know, the councillor making specific decisions or recommendations to me. Based on other people's liaison assignments, too. Like, previously, when it was done, you didn't sit on anything other than your boarding committee. And again, the reason, you know, we don't invite counselors is because people have multiple requests that they sit on. So I just, it feels like then that would be an imbalance between the information that he has compared to the information all of you have in the voting process. I'm happy to forward my notes. If you want my notes, I take copious notes on the interviews, maybe that's helpful for additional information. Process, Mayor, what's?
This is your prerogative? This is what, what's written?
The council rules dictate the mayor's recommendation process, so.
It's our decision.
Yeah. Do we want it, right?
So I'd like to hear from you, too. Same. Obviously quiet.
So I will also be, it is my preference that it stays with me, just be, but I understand that the desire to have more information.
It doesn't seem like we have so many applicants that we're cutting down from tons and tons to just a few.
This is the last time I interviewed 50 people. Yeah, I mean, it's not like one, like I interviewed 50 people the last round.
How many spots?
Which is also why, like. Which is also why like there's four questions, they're in and they're out, like it is. I apologize. I'm like back on policy. So that's what I believe.
Oh, yes, it was.
What would you say while the camera says?
I apologize if that was, that you felt that was not my intention.
I think we can have some fun.
I think we've been in this room a long time together today.
Yeah.
Um, so we do have about an hour left and we still have a lot of business to do. Um, so liaison assignments, uh, previously were for two years. But that also coincided with the council president being for two years. And again, my, how, um, I recommended they be out. You know, the, the council president role got less boards and committees because of the other roles being taken on with that. So, um, we could continue to do two years and maybe just revisit if council president changes. Or we could have this discussion every year. Um, what is the preference? Counsel. How about just start this way? Raise your hand if it's one year. Okay, two year?
How about it depends?
All right. So councillor, did you see, talk about two years?
I feel that'll take about six months to really know what I'm doing one on. And then by that time, I have over six months with the group before we search it up again. I understand the flip side though, the more committees you're on over time, the more you understand things about each one. So if you're opposing cons of each.
Okay.
Uh, one year, I think that if in the event we have, you know, let's say you're here for, we have a council president for one year. A larger workload, get a different council president the next year, get, and they have their standing committee assignments during a two-year period. Um, there's going to have to be some leveling out that happens anyway. It probably just makes sense to go through the process again, rather than sort of picking and choosing who gets what and, and just sort of having this sort of informal shuffling that, that would happen. I just think it would be a cleaner process overall to do it that way.
So are you advocating two years?
One year.
No, I mean.
One, one year. I just think that would be, it would be a cleaner reset. Uh, in the event that during that two-year period, the council president shifts because things would have to look a lot more.
Okay.
And I would agree with Jake's comments there, but also as a liaison, um, you're just going to listen and then report back. So it's not like you're going to be learning a lot anyway. And if you want a little more, you can take the chair out or the staff person out and learn more about that committee. So from my perspective, the more committees you sit on, the more value it is to you as city councillor to go back into the community. So that's another reason I'd support one year.
The reason I said it depends is when you serve as a liaison, I think that's fair. I think like CCE meets every other month. So that you're kind of that, you're just starting to build a relationship, whether you're, you know, influencing, that's one piece. But then also on some of their regional pieces where I think you are making more of a decision, you are an active member. That's kind of where you're just learning, like the joint partnership with LO. Um, where you are voting on things, you are, you know, making decisions. Uh, you're just kind of learning and then you're back off. Cause that's, is it quarterly E or every two months? I think it's our councillor who, um, that LO meets. So I think it just, it.
Every quarter.
Every quarter. So that's where I wrestle with what the right balance is, but I'll support the one year. Um, I mean, that's fine, recognizing there's a few that might be hiccups, but.
And you can always request if you want a second year or two, when everyone can say you've done such a great job. Continue.
Yeah, why?
Why there? Um, what about something like, or do you have anything additional to add? Cause I think maybe in my head I have a compromise.
Uh, the only additional thing I would say for one year is, I like the end of one year because you can experience more and learn more. But also I noticed that a few, some of the ones that I put very, very low, somebody else put very, very high and that was great. But some of them were not very popular and like the highest that it was, was say number six or number seven and maybe fourteen, right? And so that way, so no one really wants to do that one as much. So each person only has to do it for you.
You know, I, I, I watched the charter review committee meetings. Uh, thank you Shelby and councillor Shaw. Um, I think one of the main reason that the committee member wanted to change council president term from two years to one year is so that a council member can rotate and experience, have different experiences while on the council. So for this reason, I think, uh, we should follow the spirit of the charter and also at least exploring rotating council at different committees every year. So that's my reason.
Then let's do one year. I, I, with the caveat, I will say that I do think something like the Tiger, like last week go partnership is such a heavy lift to get on board with the rules and stuff. That maybe there are some we emphasize should be two years because it's a really heavy lift to get up to speed. Um, and like it's also a heavy staff lift and to do that every year for four meetings a year is, um, a big challenge. Or maybe it's that like one person has to stay on for two years. There's a two, there's rotating two-year terms or something like that. Um, that being said, I apologize in my notes. I didn't realize that that partnership had two, uh, recommendations. Generally, my recommendation would be councillor Vu, just because I think Chart is up in the air. And so if something happens to Chart, then he still has three assignments. And that would continue at least one person continuity on that.
Yeah, I don't know. Like council, uh, council president Wolf is the chair. So now we have to get a new chair, but it's fine.
I think I'm done.
Oh, yeah.
Ooh, sounds like a great role for you.
It's rotating between Lake Oswego.
But it, no, but yeah, okay.
Okay. So one year with maybe us looking at a couple of the ones that have, are heavy lifts that we meet less often, but a lot to learn. There would be some sort of consistency. I hope that like, I hope that I was fair with the recommendations and I tried to give everyone their first one. And then for some of you, like your second, third, fourth, fifth was other people's first class. So it's sort of, um, I even had, you know, a second set of eyes with my husband. I was like, what, what am I missing and those sorts of things? So, um, also looked at, um, everybody I think has at least one that meets monthly or what I would consider like a city border committee and then other ones that are a little bit more outside facing. Um.
Mayor knowing one that's outstanding, uh, until our next budget meeting would be social services. And then I guess it's that one or two now that we're extending.
Yeah. So councillor Schlag asked me about it. I think two years ago, we waited until the budget committee. So it was both a discussion on councillors and community members as far as who would serve.
Yes.
Um, and we also should probably have a discussion because now that the budget committee is bigger, should that committee be bigger? And that in my opinion is a budget committee discussion, not a council discussion. Just because we are not the only ones on that. Excellent. Yeah, councillor Shaw.
I was going to say, as I, uh, we, we did have that conversation and I formally talked with finance about something I brought up at the previous budget meeting, which was proportionately extending to add one more councillor. It's a big lift. It's, you and I both know from this, so.
Councillor and a community member.
Councillor and community.
That and both?
Yeah, so, um, but, uh, I, I support having that discussion of the budget for the reasons you said.
Uh, there are a couple of things again that aren't on there. The transportation strategy committee. Again, the council president is just on there. Um, historically, the chamber gap committee, which is not ours. The council president has been invited to participate in that and that is not something that we assign. That is an invitation from an outside group to one of our members. So sometimes there's stuff like that, that is additional roles that like we don't get to dictate who sits on it. So I just want to throw that out there. Additional questions, comments? Yeah, councillor Shaw.
If we did want to speak to another councillor about possibly swapping, is that open for?
Yeah. So I guess let me give you the history, um, and why this process changed. So when I was appointed six years ago, um, I knew nothing about the city. I like, sure, I think I briefly looked at, because one of the questions was like, name like three committees. And I was like, thank God I looked at that list. But like I had no city experience. And so when we had this meeting, everybody else pounced on, for lack of a better term, like the good popular things. And I was just stuck left because I didn't know what to, there was just a, like a power, like inequity. And it was dumping on the newer councillor. And I was like, well, this isn't fair. Like I don't, I don't know what I'm doing here. And so we talked about instituting where like, so it's independent. What do you all want to do? And then literally, so I didn't take a picture, but I did the same thing I did with, like, um, I had your names and I like, I'm not, like, I'm not even kidding. Oh, I left it at home. Yes. I like, and I had the committee and when they meet and I put it out and I had all your things to like figure it out. Because that to me felt more equitable than like, like councillors perhaps with a power differential, even of councillors who have been here for a little while and running councillors. So that is the history between that. If you all want to negotiate or like throw it all out and sit here and fight each other over it, that is your prerogative. It's not my recommendation, but that is your prerogative if you wanted to do that. Um.
I just wanted to publicly thank you for going through this because it reminds me a bit of the social services grant subcommittee where you have a lot of decisions, different data points you consider. And it's nice to have something to react to, to expedite decision-making. So I appreciate you.
I'm happy to do it. And I, like I said, I like, it takes more time than you'd think. We said, oh, well then this does this. And oh, this person has like regular ones, but this, so anyway, so I tried my darkest to make it fair.
And the, and the survey is really great. They're pretty slick. I really.
Yeah, yeah. So we're working really hard to help make these processes more, just in general, like that's my goal, more equitable, more people at the table, more fair. So, um, have it, councillor Shaw.
Well, since, uh, can we put a timeframe to it? Like within a week or just because we received it and thank you again for all the work since we received it, I think it was last night. Yeah, last night.
I, I don't know. We could, do you want to have the discussions here? Because I mean, I, I think at the, I don't know, not the next council meeting, maybe like we have to adopt these to formalize them.
Great.
So are you, do you want time to think or do you want to say you want to change one?
Um, I'm happy to say I want to change one. Um, so I'd be interested in swapping audit committee with community for, for, uh, community engagement as a possible. So if that would affect Heather or, um.
There were, so I just want to give background as far as why, because she had previously served on the audit committee as an individual. And then I think CCE is her only regular recurring committee. So audit committee would be less recurring.
So I have a backup then.
Yeah.
Uh, audit committee for town center advisory commission. But that's for.
That's my only regular one?
Yeah, that's okay too, just opening the conversation.
If you want it, I can give it to you. That means less time.
I just wondered what you're, that's fine.
So can I just give you, the audit committee meets like twice a year?
I know.
So.
That's not.
It's not a meeting. I just have no outwardly facing community meetings. But that doesn't mean, and this would be my next question, and I know councillor Wolf and I have talked about this previously. But if I as a councillor wanted to go to a community, uh, engagement. Sure, I got the name right. Community for community engagement, as we call it CCE. But if I wanted to go to that, is it okay just as a councillor to go and sit and listen? Uh, because since I don't have any outwardly in committees that I'm engaging in, like chart or CCE.
The transportation advisory committee is outward, you know?
It, well, it's a, it's a, it's not with the community. It's a designated number of folks who come, who represent transportation itself, not different parts of the community. But anyway, I'm happy to say with the committees, it's just then am I as a councillor? Um, am I able, if there's something of interest like a T-TAC, is there, am I allowed? Or is it permissible for me to go to that meeting to listen? Or is it a power dynamic and I shouldn't go or?
They're all open.
Open to public. And they, as I said, they, they usually don't even.
No, I know. They never recognize we're even there.
I mean, I'm there, so.
After all, sir, they never recognized I was there.
I have the same question. I know looking at the, the survey, which is public record, you know, T-TAC was, was the one that I think had the highest level of interest across, you know, for serving on it. I was one of those folks and I want to learn more about transportation. So I would love to attend as a member of the public to that public meeting. It just gets awkward with, uh, being a councillor, that, that power dynamic, am I encroaching on someone's territory, so to speak? Um, so I think that's a, a good ground rule of like councillors are, you know, their public meetings, they can attend. I don't know if we have to give a courtesy notification or something.
Yeah, I, I guess it's just our general philosophy and my only thing would kind of go back to what Jill says about power dynamics and those sorts of things. And encroaching in each other's roles as far as liaison, like would they look past whoever the liaison and ask the councillor in the audience, rather than seeing them as just a community member? I, I don't know, because I like, I don't think we've really run across this before. Shelby? Did you, oh, were you trying to say something? No, it was your.
Yeah, it was probably me. So councillor Shaw, help me understand by what you mean by outward facing. And the reason I'm asking is, um, so I like that audit committee. I've already served on it, but I'm happy to do that. I had prioritized, um, the community development block grant. So I've served on that. Um, but if that's something, that's regional across the county, that if that fulfills an interest of yours, but I don't know if that helps you. And I don't know if you want me to serve on audit committee again. Um, but we can talk, I mean, I'm happy to, to do that.
Yeah, cause it, then that would be something I'd be interested in. Cause this gets me out of a particular committee. And I very much appreciate being on the transportation. It's kind of my area of expertise. So it's helpful. Um, but it doesn't get me out to the community, whereas with chart, I could meet with the churches that came. I could meet with, um, our different providers. And then same with the community, um, CCE had different participants as well. So it was a broader perspective of individuals as meaning was what helped me as a councillor.
So your service on chart transitions well to, um, CDBG because it's emergency service. So your service on Chart transitions well to CDVG because it's emergency services and had funds, right? And the home infrastructure, I mean.
Yeah, so that was my thinking.
You can have Chart if you want, Chart.
Well, if Chart goes away.
Then it's.
Yeah.
So Mayor, that's up to you, but I.
It's not, I mean.
So if that, it's a Thursday evening.
I'm not gonna stay between.
It starts at seven.
Is it every week?
Not a hill.
Second Thursday. So if that, if you want to learn more about it, you know, the chair, it used to be Commissioner Therese and now Chair Harrington will be on that committee this year. And then there's a representative from every city. So you're working with mayors and councilors across Western County.
Something you'd recommend?
Well, I.
She listed it as her number one.
There's some that I couldn't because they're a direct conflict with my other boards. So they are bottom of my list because of that. No, because I do, I like Audit.
Because they're wonderful people.
I'm happy to do that. And if that gets you that personal goal, I'm happy to support that. I enjoy it, I think it's a great group of people.
Well, if, if you want, we could have a compromise, since we're compromisers. I'm happy if you want to continue and I can go to the first meeting and, or is that weird?
I, I think just when we approve it here soon, so we can.
Oh, I see, right, okay.
So how about you and I have an offline conversation and confirm with the mayor?
Perfect. Because if it's your number one, I would feel guilty about.
It's all, I totally get where you're coming from and I appreciate that. So I'm happy to make that swap. So let's talk.
Okay.
Anyone else? What are you coming to the table with? So what's that happened? I didn't recommend alternates because if somebody was like, I didn't want to undo a bunch of work. Like, do you want me to recommend alternates after it's done? Like, do you, like, how do you want to handle alternates? Because honestly, all I would have done is looked at your preferences and said, you weren't the primary, but your second one, you could be the secondary, great. Like, I would use the same philosophy. I don't know why I'm signing myself up for more work than I am.
Is there a second, is there an alternate for yours?
I'm the alternate.
There's an alternate for everything. So if someone can't go, another person goes, that being said, like, if the committee doesn't have a counselor, what?
Well, we, maybe we could do so we don't give you more work. It's just name up each committee and raise our hand if we want to be the alternate. And if there's more than one, then we'll work it out.
Yeah.
And then some of them are regional, right, Mayor, where you do have a vote. So then I do think the alternate is important because it's core and pattern.
I'm picking like Audit, not Audit, but you know, library board. I know, it is a warm hug, but just in case you can't make it, like, the world will go on. I know, I love them.
I understand.
I do. Okay, well, I can do that. Okay, so I have the Excel document open, Urban Renewal Funding Selection Subcommittee.
Are there alternates for that?
There's two.
Are there two on there already? Okay, Town Center Advisory Commission. You know what, Rob is learning so much more. Oh geez, oh my gosh.
I have copies if anyone needs.
Chart, what is Chart? The Community Homeless Association. Councilor Goodness, you already raised this, is that, anyone else? Tigered L O Water Partnership, oh, there's going to be two people on it already. Committee for Community Engagement.
I have a conflict, I can't do it. So I could be the alternate then to.
Pass it off, yeah.
And then we don't, we don't remove you from your.
Okay, perfect, your call.
For some of these, I will need somebody to raise their hand, the Water Advisory Board.
Wouldn't it be?
It's like, it used to be before Library Board. But it's like every other.
Wednesdays every two months?
Yeah, it's every other month, like on Wednesdays.
Which ones are?
Water Advisory Board.
Right before Library?
Yeah, sometimes, I mean, I would have to like rush from one to the other.
I'm not gonna miss it, so.
Planning Commission, those are Mondays. Willamette River Water Coalition. Don't get all excited about the water ones, there's still, I think, one more. So I'm doing them in chunks, that was Heather, this is Jay, or I'm sorry, Councilor Schlag is currently on the Urban Renewal Funding Selection Subcommittee, Planning Commission and Willamette River Water Coalition.
I was on that, can be the alternate.
Okay. And now these are Councilor Shaw's unless there is a change, at which I am not privy to at this time. The Transportation Advisory Committee, can we say when that, Wednesdays meet before we raise hands?
They, we just met on, what was it, odd night, we met Monday night. Or was it Wednesday? I had three different meetings. It was Wednesday because they conflict with T-TAC. Yeah, so it's Wednesday night from six until eight.
So I'd like to be an alternate. Okay.
For transportation.
Who wants to be an alternate?
No, no, I.
That's okay.
Marine, you want Audit?
Okay.
Audit, I'll be the alternate.
Well, okay, thank you. I was like, but it's yours, it's not yours yet. And the Willamette Intake Facility, also known as WIF.
Don't all fight for it at once.
The water stuff is really.
It's really fascinating.
I am currently the primary quarter, I'm here with that, I'm happy to be the alternate.
Thank you, Councilor Schlag. And so now, Council President Wolf's recommendations, so CDVG Policy Advisory Board. When was that meeting?
Thursday night, second Thursday of the month. Typically, two in person, rest are virtual.
Well, if we don't swap, we would still need an alternate.
I'd be the alternate.
Okay.
Unless you want to keep it and I could be your alternate.
You are currently the alternate to Audit. So why don't you be the alternate? And if you all switch, it makes it really easy.
Yep.
And the Regional Water Providers Consortium, which I think meets like, what, twice a year? Is that the one that's like twice a year?
It's a quarterly one, I'm currently, I've had one meeting in the last six months. One, one other one, I know Transportation Strategy Team is the council president one, but I, when I looked through the council assignments, I think I learned I'm the alternate for that one currently. If that still needs an alternate, I would love to.
I think between the two of us, it doesn't. I don't know, I mean, honestly, I don't know why I had one. It's, it's really more like, the council president is the alternate to the mayor on that and they just attended, I would say. If you have questions about transportation, they, I mean, we go over all of the other boards and committees that I attend and, yeah, so. Happy to help. Okay, so, I will send this over to the city team. Well, you, you two, let me know when you've figured out whatever it is and when that happens, we'll send it over. Carol, are we anticipating in like two weeks to have, or I guess, what is the timeline to have this before council? And do we just, when do we want this effective, even if we don't vote yet, I guess?
Thank you.
Because I know there's a meeting tomorrow or Monday. And so based on this, is it the old council liaison, is it the new council liaison? If they can make it, when do we want this effective?
When you say tip, that's, is that urban?
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Which would be moving to Counselor Who and Counselor Schlag. Do we need alternates for Park and Rec?
Park and Rec and Metro.
Metro Area Communications. Oh, your stuff didn't come me over, that's what it is, sorry, Councilor. Okay, thank you.
You have to be helpful. No, no absence.
Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
It's Wednesday?
Mondays, it's Monday nights.
I can do that.
Library Board? She's only alternate for two other ones, so that would be a third, so no. It just maybe feels that way because Urban Renewal Funding and the Tigered L O Water Partnership don't have alternates. So that's four roles that we don't need alternates for. So Metro Area Communications Commission, Beck.
Quarterly Friday afternoon.
Friday afternoon, the alternate.
Excellent. Hey, super important conversation.
Really interesting.
Yeah, especially with what's happening with cable and kind of court and all those sorts of things and needing to find alternate. Okay, so the next part of it would be the old ground rules, current name administration, which is not great. So if you have an alternate name for it, please come up with one. I don't know that we need to reinvent the wheel, but we can certainly maybe make edits to what's already here. So it really talks about communication, which I think we talked a lot about this morning, but some of it, as far as how it's going to be handled. Responses, currently responses to the public. All public statements, information or press releases should be handled by the mayor, city manager or designee. Councilors may respond to community requests for information. When sharing information, it's important to be clear whether it's the council is stating personal opinions or sharing the majority position of the council. And only the city council is a body to make promises or commitments on behalf of the city. The, I think, yeah, the, the, yeah, I guess any questions? We talked about, I think some of the stuff that could potentially get sticky is if somebody emails all of us but doesn't use council mail or emails a couple of councilors and not everybody. That typically tends to be the sticky information. So when somebody emails me or emails council mail, ultimately with the new process, the response still comes out from me or from council, you know, to everybody. But in the situation in which, like, you know, council president or Counselor Who used, you know, because he would go to events, he would get an individual email that someone would ask him a specific question. Historically, what would happen is the city would help him craft a response and then when it would go out, it would copy everybody. So that's one of the things you should know is anytime we respond to somebody, like the entire, like council mail is copied. So the expectation would be also that for any individual communication. There's a couple of things, sticking points, so. There is a clear differentiation, I think, in my mind, between someone is intending public comment and when they're asking us or sharing an opinion and wanting a response. Like, the, the thing came up that went a little bit back and forth earlier this month or last year? I can't even remember now, where the city was like, forward us all responses. And it was like, well, that's not really what they were after, they were after understanding because the email went to all of us as individuals and not council mail, where staff is copying, that they didn't know about that comment until they heard about it publicly when we were referencing the letter that had been sent to us for public comment. So we just need to sort of have a mechanism that says that this is intended to be public comment. We need to be able to send it to Carol so she can make it part of the record. Because I don't think Corinne, I don't know if Corinne has access to all of your emails. Yeah, so I think Corinne just has access to mine, which is totally fine. But we just need to know that like, if we get something that is, you know, intended for public comment, that Carol gets a copy of it. And I don't know if the answer is all of us sending it to her and us being extra diligent, right? Like, I also think of office space, I have 17 bosses and like, you know, maybe she would rather have 17 emails than none, right? Like, I think that's the only time where there's like a squishy sort of a thing outside of what we have written, if what we have written is okay. Council President?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's part of me, and I'm not trying to be a bureaucrat by saying this, but if you want an official public comment for the record, should we redirect them to use the public comment process? Instead of us sending things to Carol because they shoot an email off that says, this is public comment? Well, if you want it for the record, then you should use the city's process? And I don't mean to be, you know.
No, that's a good point. So I will just say, in general, like, I have emailed another mayor and they have a really great automatic response that says, like, thank you so much for emailing us, blah, blah, blah. If you want a proclamation, this is where you go. If you want this, this is where you go. If you want this, like, if you want homelessness, here's the webpage, otherwise, we will get back to you soon. And like, maybe we do something like, we're working on something like that too. Where if like, Mr. Two loves to email me proclamations, where it's like, use the form, man, we've been over this. Like, this is your fourth time, like, use the form. Well, now he does both, he submits the form and he sends an email, which is lovely. So, but like, you know, something like that. But I think that's fair, I'm saying emailing us public comment is not appropriate, you need to go through the process. But then it's like, does that person get seven different emails, right? Because we're all responding or?
Or just forwarded to.
Well, or if it's quit to say, and here's the link, right? So we're not saying, oh, you have to, and then I'm like, well, great, how do I do that?
Yes, I always assume that like, we should be helpful in the response and like.
Yeah, but if one person gets seven emails, maybe they'll get the, you know, I do like, oh, here's the link, this is how I'm supposed to, at least we're consistent.
Or I, I assume there's probably no problem with whoever gets to it first, which no offense will probably be Counselor Who, to just copy everybody else on it. Because it's not, and just saying, hey, thanks so much for your comment, this is our public process. Or do you still want that to come from me?
Why can't that come from Corinne?
Because she doesn't have access to people's emails unless I'm also included on it.
But anything that goes, I, I mean, looking at it, if it's from, if it's someone sends something to me, then I could reply saying, include council mail and say, thank you so much, here's the process and we'll get back to you. But if it's somehow sent to council mail, those ones that are sent.
Yeah, all of us.
Yeah, then she should, you know, it shouldn't be this race or, oh, he'll do it first or he'll do it first. So those ones that are sent to everybody, Corinne takes care of it. And then if it's sent to me, I either take care of it or I say, Corinne, could you help me take care of this?
Excellent, I think, so you weren't copied on this, this very specific situation, they emailed to the five of us and not council mail. So there are situations in which that happened, because there was somebody, oh, the man who's mad at the judge. He very specifically emailed us individually and didn't email council mail. So there are lots of situations in which council mail is not copied.
Well, then I guess of those, we need to just pay attention and if Counselor Who replies, then I need to be careful and say, oh, I think I saw this. And then I could be like, yeah, I got this too, but I don't need to also reply to the guy saying.
Yeah, I'm just thinking back to like, when everybody's in charge, nobody is in charge, yes. And so maybe it just continues to go back and in that scenario, if we're all copied, like, the council president or me are the ones responsible for getting it back. Maybe that's just what we do, so it's not some sort of round and around. And if maybe for some reason your email doesn't flag everything and you don't think someone's responded or whatever, like, you know, I also don't want someone getting seven emails, we just, we didn't see the reply.
And these are just emails related to a public comment for a meeting?
Yeah, or, I mean, yeah, because typically if someone's asking for a proclamation or those sorts of things, we immediately. So if someone is asking for a proclamation, I am not copying, like, I will just say, here is the thing. If we are giving city advice or responding to a comment, that is when I copy all of you. Because I don't think you want to just spend your time reading that when you, you're gonna get nothing out of it.
But I think, because we get a series of emails that have nothing to do with public comment, so I am, Carol, just talking about. There are emails we get, this is, you know, my official public comment. Well, then it should go through this form and this process, because this is how we record that.
I guess that's my question, is public comment only received through a form or can they email you directly?
They can email us directly or for you guys directly if it's related to a meeting, to a topic, an upcoming meeting.
So they can technically, I mean, so that's the thing, right? I also don't want to email someone to say, now you need to forward this email to Carol.
Can we get it forward?
Like, you know what, it just.
Well, the agenda has, you know, it says, click here to find ways to, you know, connect. And so it, it puts it in a public comment workflow. And it'll automatically go to Jesse and I, and we know those are for meetings, because they. And we know those are for meetings because they bothered to go to that agenda and they're connecting their comment to it.
Yeah, I'm, so I'm talking about a scenario in which someone emails us and like, I'm thinking about the customer service experience and the community experience of like, if I were to email council, not council mail, but council, a public comment because I don't know the process, which happens all the time, and I don't begrudge people that, I would be so annoyed if the mayor emailed back and said, you need to send this to Carol. That just, that is a dick move, right? I would be so mad on top of, I'm probably already mad at emailing you to begin with. So thinking, thinking of the customer experience sort of a thing, if Carol says, like, public comment can also be received just by emailing Carol and not by submitting the form, then like, I'm just going to forward it to Carol, like, or maybe I can, you know, the response is, hey, I've gone ahead and forwarded this to the city recorder, but just know in the future, this is the form that you use. Or maybe that's something that Corinne does on my behalf, so I don't have to do that. You know, I just, like, I think customer service, like, I helped somebody, my client yesterday, I'm like, you don't fan the flames, you're trying to calm them down, like, so something like that is reasonable.
And Carol, so we, so I'm looking at our website, so is it just the protocol? So we actually don't tell people how to send an email, do we?
Well, we do, yeah.
It is on there, okay, I digress because I didn't see it.
Our website is not user friendly, council president.
And then also, these are comments related to the meeting, but, and tied to that agenda, but that will also take ones that come in that haven't been responded to.
But like, on behalf of an agenda item, and it feels fairly clear when you know someone is making a public comment on an agenda item or just asking us to take care of an issue, okay?
And those would come from Corinne, I guess, now, but. She would know, these came in, you guys didn't respond to it, so we'll put it in dispatch and then they will get a response, along with the others for the meeting.
Clear as mud so far on this responses to the public?
Yeah, it's on the homepage with meeting.
And then these are put in the summary that you get the day before, if they're turned in by noon on Monday.
I have one clarifying.
Yeah.
So on the fourth one, only the city council as a body can make promises or commitments on behalf of the city. That makes sense in a response, you know, in, in writing. But I'm just curious, what would that process look like at a public meeting? Because we do have a lot of things where we have discussions sort of like this and we have suggestions and so on and at the end it's, do the staff have the direction they need in order to proceed? I'm wondering how that would differ from a promise or a commitment to do something? Is that like a motion, is that just?
So think of it outside of, so you as a city councillor, having a conversation with a community member cannot promise that city council is going to designate every day the greatest day of the world. Like, you don't have the right to do that and to say that the six other people, to make that commitment on behalf of everybody. So this is more interpersonal relationships outside of the dites of when you're talking to community members, like, for instance, I have a community member who really wants me to do tenant rights stuff and it's like, I can tell you what I can do, but I'm telling you, you have to talk to everybody else to get everybody else's commitment because I'm one of seven, like, I can't promise on behalf, that's what that's getting at. Unless we've already taken action and then you can say, the council has decided X.
But what that, I guess this is more, we can say that for another time.
No, ask a question.
Well, just I'm wondering what that would look like, would that be a specific motion that we would need in order to make a promise or commitment to do something or like?
Yeah, it would be a council decision.
Okay, opposed to just the usual sort of, like, does staff have the direction it needs to go about doing something?
Right, yeah, because to the mayor's point, so if the decision is, so if the promise is, we're going to pave the street in front of you that you keep complaining about, then you can't promise that we're going to do that. But as council, you can discuss as part of a policy, hey, let's reprioritize, let's have this item moved up ahead of this item, you're welcome constituent, now council is a vote, or council as a body votes to reprioritize and now we're paving the streets. So it would be a council decision. And it could be in a form of a motion, resolution, whatever, but it would be a formal council action.
Is there anything we need to add or change in this section? Social media, everybody has it in front of them, you don't have to read it out.
I think the last group that did this did such an exceptional job.
Are you patting yourself on the back? I think I have an eye on the back, but anyway. You should know, for those who are new, we burned your last one and made it completely new.
It's like seven pages.
And it was, and this is so much more helpful and clear. I think one of the most, okay, so basically, like, a couple of general things. Your city, if you have created a city council page, that is your city council page, and even though the city doesn't touch it or own it, it is part of the public meeting law. Couple of courtesy things, don't delete anyone, don't block anyone, like, turn off all comment, like, all or nothing on comments, like, you can't target people, those sorts of things, we may go into it more later, but that First Amendment stuff will get you in a ton of trouble. Ask the guy, there's a guy who just sold like $150,000 because he deleted comments he didn't like, so. Kind of, so, I mean, I, like, I don't, I have an app that posts to everything else, I don't get on social media, so just also know that, like, it posts to everything else. But, so that is your personal page, the city doesn't touch it, say, you know, but also realize your commitment, talk from the first perspective, those sorts of things as far as communication, too.
Can I do something there?
Yeah.
You had the app that posted something, I think it was a holiday, and I re-forwarded your message. And at the time, I know it, there was an issue with that. So I'm just thinking, if I were to forward, let's say, you have something that is Happy New Year for the Chinese New Year, and I would forward that and say, Happy New Year. Is that an issue for folks?
No, it was.
So yours was a paid content or paid picture or something, I think, that's the issue was.
Yeah. So, no, I mean, you, we can share each other's stuff, the city shares my stuff and other people's stuff.
Just remember that was an issue, so if it is, I want to make sure I'm not forwarding, responding, sharing, it doesn't make sense.
The other thing I will say, though, is do not comment on other city councillors' stuff. If you start commenting, it actually becomes a serial meeting. Just hit the like button, call it good. Like, do not comment, do not engage, you can forward something and just be like, yeah, it was a great event, if I posted my pictures of all of us and you didn't forward it, great. Do not, do not engage, comments on each other or do policy, I would even stretch even on the city pages, like, that can get you in trouble if multiple of us start talking with people on the city comments, like, just exercise lots of caution.
I even, I don't even want to put the, do the like button because I, I don't.
So it's not personal, you just don't hit it?
Yeah. I just don't want to make it constant, make people think I'm agreeing with any city council business.
I do not issue a happy New Year. I do not.
I knew you did.
I do not.
It just, yeah, it, I mean, social media.
So is that just on the?
Official.
The official account, so if, if I on my personal account say, Happy New Year, and someone says, Happy New Year on my Heather Robbins Facebook with all the pictures of my kids, that's okay. But my Heather Robbins for city council, that's not okay, right?
I mean, if you want to say Happy New Year and someone else writes Happy New Year, that's fine. I'm just saying, I, I am personally recommending to you not to engage in any content, because if the, you know, somebody posts something about, which you absolutely can do and like, hey, this is coming before council and I feel very passionately that every tree should be painted blue, and you're like, no, I don't think so, that is a terrible idea. Like, even if it's my, even if I'm in my personal account, yes.
Yeah, so councillor, to that point, so it really has to do more of the content of what's posted as opposed to where it's posted. So if you post a lot of city information on your personal account, next to your kids and pets, right, that was a Supreme Court case from last year, is that, then it becomes a city page. But if councillor Caducee says Happy New Year and councillor president Wolf says, yes, Happy New Year, and everybody else says, yes, Happy New Year, that's no serial meetings issue because everybody can say Happy New Year. Content of what's being posted as opposed to where it is.
The other thing I, just as a personal thing. Post, like, so I personally have a mayor page, a political page and a personal page. I don't post anything political on my personal page, but occasionally I will forward something from my mayor page because I know that I have friends, but like, also opening up and sharing information on your personal page opens up your entire personal page to that political stuff. So you don't have to have a political page and a mayor, like a council page, you can technically just have one that kind of does both, as long as the city doesn't touch it. Once the city touches it, you can't swap back and forth between it being a political page and a council page. It's very technical and very weird, but I would just keep the lines in print.
How would the city touch it?
So for instance, like in my scenario, if I didn't want to do my city, like, my social media anymore and Corinne had access and she started posting it, then it's no longer mine and it's the city's. But like, because nobody has access to it, I'm the only one who's ever posted, I can do whatever I want. Yeah, yeah. But the moment you have somebody who goes in and starts posting for you, it becomes a different beast than just your personal city council page. Yes, do it, do it for yourself. Or pay a personal person, just don't have the city do it. Social media is so sticky.
Kind of like Jake's philosophy, stay off.
But I, I mean, I have to tell you, like, so I use Buffer and I pay to connect it to everything else and I post it there and it sends it out everywhere. So I don't, I don't log into seven different places, like, the same information, the same post goes to multiple different things, and it's actually really lovely and I never log in, so I never see anything. Communications with the organization. I think this also sort of talks about the way that we work together.
This is when we were like, as a city councillor and I wanted to say, one of Emily's employees, instead of emailing Emily, I would email her employee directly, wasn't this getting to, please email Emily and ask her, and if she wants to go to that staff person to get the information you need, then I think that was trying to get to that.
Yes, and I would say, I mean, I don't, you know, with a new city manager and those sorts of things, maybe at some point later on this year, when we get a permanent city manager, like, that conversation is different, they want it handled differently. I guess that's a, have you read that? It's basically telling us to go through city management to work with city staff, which I think is a reasonable request.
But city management as opposed to the city manager, because I was just thinking, assistant city manager, fridge, you know, as a support of the city manager, is that appropriate, even that's skip?
Yes, because Steve did not want to know everything. He, like, or he, like, you could copy him on it, but he didn't actually want to be the one doing the facilitating, he just wanted to be in the loop.
Okay, so management, so, try to reach out, like, directly to finance director King, that would be an appropriate, under that scenario, that would have been an appropriate route, or do they have a city manager title, like, you know, some form?
Well, let's ask what the next preference is going to be. How, no pressure, how would you like us if we have questions, or maybe this is something that, like, we hold off on and we come back to and edit at a different time and just leave this section off? I actually think that might be the best. Because you don't know what the city staff want or how to work with them or those sorts of things, but I think just, again, and no surprises, and the power differential of you saying what's happening here, like, it just creates different things. So I think to continue on, if we have questions, to send it to the city manager or send it to the assistant city manager and they will do the work on the backend to get us what we need, and then we can revisit, we'll just leave this off and revisit it later.
Should we leave it off or just leave it on since it's been part of the goals anyway? And then just know what we revisit?
Well, ideally, my relationship over time with city councils has been really positive and my first experience was in Beaverton. And we had some, a couple city councillors were wonderful people, but they walked the hallways freely at City Hall. I know from personal experience, starting as a city councillor, then getting elected as mayor, you put staff in a really tough spot. If you show up, walk down the front of the desk and say, I've been meaning to ask you X, and maybe they have an appointment to go to, they're having lunch with a coworker, they have an appointment with someone else. Yeah, and staff is always afraid of elected officials and it's natural. And not that, I think you want to have that power per se, but it's understandable why city staff might be frightened of some councillors and I've watched you now three times on TV, you're all very civil and you are, I think, quite respectful of one another, and I think that's really important because that stretches over to staff, but you have to be really careful. I've not minded, I've trusted my fellow electeds and as a city manager, have a relationship with the electeds that if you have a general question on how often does something need or you want an answer, I, you don't have to go through me on something simple like that, if you want to, I won't get involved if somebody doesn't want my answer on it, but we're adults here and if you're looking for just either a yes or no answer, or how many days does it take to do X, I don't want to act like a despot and, and, and be controlling your every life, but if, if you're crossing a line, I mean, that's part of what you pay me to do is I'll tell you if, if I think, and I usually ask hers, but if I think you're stepping on toes, I'll tell you in a very professional way or tell you why it's a problem. You may still be angry with me after that, but I won't do it at a council meeting and the only other thing I would ask, too, is if you're unhappy with an employee, you either didn't like the tone of the answer or didn't answer what you want, just let me know and I'll fix it. I mean, I, I want you happy with the work the employee does, especially as an interim, we'll work together for six months and hopefully I'll move on, you'll be happy with that and if the person you hire, I've always told them after I've left an interim job, you call me anytime, day or night, if, if you don't know why I did something or why we did something, I'd rather have them have the right answer than not. And what's a five minute call? I mean, I, it's not an interruption and I tell people, I'll be irritated with you if you said, I should have called you, but I didn't want to bother you. Well, I have a wonderful wife of 46 years who tolerates much of this, why I don't know, but she does, and so it's not a disruption at home. She had a high-tech PR career and there were times they'd go out on a press tour for a week or 10 days and she'd go out with two or three engineers and that's just the way our home has been and it's not a disruption, but just try not to abuse the employee or if you're just not getting what you want or you're angry at a council meeting, just let me know afterward and I'll try and fix it.
So I think let's just keep it on.
Can I ask a question? These are questions that had come up in the interviews that I did and they had, we haven't had a chance to get them answered.
Yeah, we have the on the back, too.
Okay, so, do we have to, you're stopping at four?
Yeah, in theory.
Okay, one thing I wanted to do is because I think you kind of thoroughly discussed the participating in appointments to boards and councils, I meant to say committees. the participating in, in appointments to boards and councils, or I meant to say commissions there. Um, I wonder if I should take that off and put in the question, which sort of was just discussed, but there were some specific questions that came up to me around, can I call staff directly to ask about this versus that? And it might be good to have a little bit more guidance around that. So I'm wondering if I could just replace that question, question with that last one and then I can send that to Shelby and Rob. And then they can follow up with the council. Does that sound like a reasonable way to handle all that?
Yep.
And we'll work out, but Shelby will have a good cop, bad cop.
Are you gonna rotate?
Actually, it's always been my style, confuse the council. Wait a minute, you forgot, I'm the good cop and the bad cop all along.
Uh, I think T is pretty self-explanatory. Yeah, there are a lot of really good questions around, um, what is the best way to, well, things that we, I think, um, we have some requests just on better ways that council meetings go and information that's in the packet. Um, and then just working out how we work together. Just as far as, uh, we had a really great discussion on like, for some of us, like mornings are off limits or like Wednesday afternoons are great or those sorts of things. Um, and I think just reiterating to the city team that like most of us have Mondays or Fridays, nine to five jobs and sending out requests for, or where the meeting times are only 10:00 AM in the morning or 2:00 PM in the afternoon. It gets to the point where it's an unreasonable request for us because there are some people who like, and I'm just going to use councillor Caducey as an example, like he can't meet on Wednesdays because he has 10 hours or 12 hours of clinical patients. Like there's no wiggle room there. And like figuring out ways so there's less frustration on both parts of like expectations around councillors available and mayors available time. I think it's going to be a real key in working together smoothly moving forward.
So with that and the information that Jill's going to communicate back?
No, and that's also, yeah, I mean, that's just a general question that we need to work out together because, I mean, we sort of had a casual conversation just working together of like, we know there's a councillor whose mornings are busy, so it's like, hey, don't call me in the morning, right? Like, and that is an understanding, but it's also like, how do we as a body set up expectations for the city team? Because that feels like a rub right now of like, the city team has the expectation that we should be able to answer an email at 10 o'clock, but like, you know, like so, how do we work that out? So we can be a high-performing organizations together and not have that rub. I think is some, a really important conversations moving forward.
Transparency around the limits.
Could be a really nice article about your limitations and your service. Having done it with a very full-time job outside the city and then being an elected councillor, it was impossible to get answers back to people. And I think we were 80 or 50 or $75 a month. Now, that wasn't the dark ages, the, and the dirt floors, but, um, we ended up advising the, the community about that most councils have full-time jobs. You weren't paid much, but you're all dedicated to service. I mean, again, from my time here, if, if somebody's being unreasonable with, with you, let, let me know if you're comfortable with that.
I think just having a general conversation would be helpful. So it doesn't get to the point where we feel like they're unreasonable because we have like an understanding or at least set expectations of, yes, it's your full-time job, but my full-time job is doing something else over here and what that looks like. These are, I think, our goal and the reason that we're here today, right? And spent so much time working together is being a high-performing team and achieving really great success for Tiger. And the council's not going to be successful if we can't successfully work with the city manager and the city staff to work together in parallels. So we know there's rubs on both sides and how do we resolve that going forward? There's always going to be some rubs, uh, that is just the tension of it. But how do we work to resolve what's already there?
So is this a future conversation that we're looking to schedule?
Yeah, I think perhaps like in the morning, because I, like, is the expectation that goal setting is going to take all day? Because historically it's been like an afternoon.
Right, so, uh, right now, no. It sounded like, and you can answer if this is accurate or not, Steve has done an initial kind of, uh, reach out to all of you and it sounded like nobody has any huge significant changes to make to the goals. So if that's the case, then it sounded like a fairly straightforward, more finessing as opposed to starting over. So if that's the case, then.
I don't remember.
I was like, I think it was not to me.
Okay. Well, so then I guess I would pose it to you now. Is, is your sense that goal setting is going to take the whole day? And you're going to want that full day of discussion? Or looking at our goals, are you feeling like it's more finessing and we'd be able to work this into the morning?
I think we'd be able to work it into the morning. I don't know that this discussion would take four hours to that, like, so, I assume this would probably be like a six-hour conversation, soup and nuts, from how do we agree to work together and those sorts of things to what is our goals moving forward? Yeah, I don't, I think that would be fine. At least I don't know of any councillor who's like, all the trees must be blue.
Not, not this year.
Speaking for myself.
I mean, that made, at least that wasn't out of any of your campaign promises.
No.
Speaking for myself, my viewpoint with council goals at least is, you know, we had an election. I think it's, um, incumbent on us to have a full and frank discussion about what the council goals should be. I just, I think it would be, it would be bad for the council to come out of an election, especially one with an expansion. And we just say, we like the council goals as they are, we are not going to, we're just going to change the words here and there, but more or less, we're just going to keep going in the same track. I feel like we need to have that level of scrutiny, a, a good level of scrutiny to make sure that we are being responsive to the needs of our community. And, uh, this is a good opportunity to do that every two years.
So I had reached out to our consultant who's facilitating the goal setting. And so this is tentative, so Jill was part one and then Eric Jensen from Jensen Strategies was going to be part two. We can stick with Joe for the same if you want continuity, that's a council discussion. But Eric, uh, had responded that he could do March 29th or April 5th.
That feels way too far.
Goal setting.
It's another two and a half months to, I mean, and then you're at what, a 12th into, or no, an eight, no. Yeah, an eight into, it's too far. And I'm sorry, that's my initial first reaction, but it's too far.
But the goals are July 1st, 2025.
Our, our goals historically have always been, calendar year, based on January.
Last year was the latest we had them too. It was in April.
Was it in April?
I think it was April.
I don't think it was that far.
Maybe it wasn't that far, but I remember last year being late because we were late and we were stressing at that time.
It was last year.
Oh, sorry, two years ago, 23 would have been.
Yeah, it's kind of, my friend has not to wait that long.
The council review and discussion items on, no, first time, sorry, I'm going to keep looking, I think I printed it. It seems late.
I, I would like to, I agree, bringing up would be good unless we decide to go to a fiscal year model, which considering that the budget is sort of the ultimate policy document, I could make an argument for, but I'm not going to at that four, 10, after an eight-hour meeting.
Yeah, how the election works.
Yeah, so I'm.
Yeah, and with the amount of time it takes us to do budget committee that we all sit on, I kind of, I've been crunching that in there too. But I also, I mean, yeah. I'm, I don't want to put Jill on this call. She, I totally thought after.
Is it a weekend or a weekday?
I would say if we did a weekday, it would probably have to be two Tuesdays. Or it would be another Saturday.
Why does it have to be Tuesday?
To replace, if it were a weekday, like, I don't, I don't want to take a day off, like an unpaid payoff for that. So it would be like two, and we try, when we do stuff like this, we try to hold council meetings so people don't have to alter their schedule.
I understand.
Yeah, my friend, I guess another weekend.
My weekends are, are more open.
Oh, excellent.
I mean, that's, that was my, where I was going with that question. And I don't know how everybody else feels about a weekend. Don't make it work.
Depends on what weekend, because I've already got lots of travel booked.
I cannot participate the 8th or the 15th, so I have the 1st or the 22nd of February.
I'm out of town first, I know that. And what was the other date?
The 22nd, unless we were to look at a Sunday and I don't know what people's availability or want is on a Sunday instead of Saturday.
I can't on the 22nd either, after saying I was open. Sorry, I'm going out of town, I will be out of town both of those days. I, I know, Sundays, Sundays before the 22nd would probably be.
Yeah, I mean, my Sundays are open.
Not the 2nd, but I could do the, the 9th?
Not that I need the, I'm going the 2nd and the 9th.
I can do the 16th?
Tentatively going, but is this something we can call into or is it preferred we be in person?
Mayor, it would probably be easier in person just because council goals are a pretty big discussion, but you could certainly participate probably.
Okay. I can do that. So that is President's Day.
Yeah, it's a long weekend.
Valentine's, it's Friday.
Um, oddly, I have more time on the weekends available in January. I just have a couple of trips in February, unfortunately. I don't know if the, like, the 18th, 19th works. That's actually next weekend, so it'd be two weekends in the, 25, 26. You said you were coming back at 11:30 this morning. 11:30 at PM someday, is that like the 20?
Yeah, Sunday, yeah. It's the, it's the flight that leaves 6:30 East Coast time and lands 11:30.
About January 25th.
I have boardroom committee interviews from 10:00 PM, or 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then we have the civic engagement for kids from 1:00 to 2:30, but we could take a break and run over and do that and then continue on. When, what day? Sunday, January 26th, there's a, a civics engagement fair at the Tiger Public Library that we were invited to.
Yeah. The book.
It's a book.
Kids book about. The 26th works for me, we can just do a long one.
So we could do something in the morning with a goal of ending by 1:00 PM. Like, uh, we would need to end by 12:30 so we could get there by 1:00 PM. Four and a half, I don't know, about four and a half hours is going to be up, but we can try. And I guess worst-case scenario, come back after the event or?
Does this need to be a public meeting? Is it then a private? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just going to reserve the day for right now.
Sounds like it works for everybody, that's amazing.
Sunday, the 26th of January.
Yeah.
I'm just going to reserve the whole day and you, you can let me know if it's going to work.
I assume start time TBD, since we need a location, I don't know if it'll be offsite or?
It might actually be easier, the library, but I, it won't be open because that's where the event will be.
There's a conference room at the library. There is?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
It's a lecture.
Oh, they open for us. I mean, I, I'm not, there are some perks to this job. Yeah. Yeah, and then it would be easier to just walk to the event. Would you be able to ask Hallstead, is available? It has a lovely view.
Beautiful view.
And we can see Jill again. So we can see Jill again. She tests us if we've been.
Yeah. I'm going to have to give myself a to see.
I assume it all would go longer than that because we're going to have to work through all of these questions as I go through goals. So things that you can do in preparation is look at the current, like, come, please come very prepared to this meeting. Think about the conversations that you had on the campaign trail, think about what's important to you. Also, keep in mind, these goals are two-year goals. Not necessarily that they have to be a checkbox, but like, you know, this isn't something that like is a 10-year goal. It's a two, these are two-year council goals. So come prepared to make edits to what's already there or suggestions for changes or something.
Or four again, or what would go with it?
We, there is no like aiming for a number. I think if the city staff had their way, they would slice it to two. So I would say we absolutely should not ask for more or not put more than four, but that doesn't mean we have to have four.
That's good to know.
I think we learned we're successful with less goals.
I know, yeah.
It sounds duh, but when I first tried.
Get the roof down, okay. So we are already 20 minutes away and I want to be respectful of the time.
It sounds duh, but you'll.
We have a goal to leave the Sunday, the 26th of the library. If we kick it off at 8:00 AM, there, we have a better chance of getting like four and a half, almost five hours in and not having to do anything after the event. That would be ideal, can we do 8:00 AM?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then just have promise, plenty of coffee, warm coffee.
And keep it warm.
So, well, bring a thermos of your own that you can put in, do it, keep it warm.
So typically, the leadership team attends council goal setting. Is that expectation that they would be invited?
Yeah, as long as there's room in the room. But I think it would be great for them to be there. And it's, I don't know, it might actually be helpful for them to hear a part of the discussion earlier of like, how do we work together? Because some of the rubs may be expectations.
So I do think there's still to live for. Since 23 to 25, it would be 23 and 24. If I understood, Mary, you were saying we're already behind because they're effective at the beginning of the year. If you're fiscal years, then it makes sense you're halfway through 23 and you're closing halfway in 25. The calendar would be all 23, all 24.
This is the first year that they made the goals three years. Like, his, like, all, like, the other goals, it would have been 23 to 24. I don't know why they're 23 to 25 goals, they've never been that way.
So if you don't mind, I, um, so if you would clarify, because I really felt like we set them that they went into play July 1st after we've been on council, but maybe not. So I'm not saying that. I would trust the clarify.
Well, yeah, just from my experience, like, it has always been a calendar year thing and not a fiscal year thing. So I don't, like, I can't remember, for some reason, we were just way behind, um, last time. But I, yeah.
She should have been calendar, we were behind for some reason, I can't remember the staffing, but there was some.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved and seconded, all of those in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, we are adjourned, thank you everyone.
May I ask a question about the agenda for the, the 26th? Does it include this and am I?
Yes, I, yes, please, that, so that would be the first part of the morning as far as.